Folks, this is the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee, November 18th. Called to order at 6:01. We moved the meeting tonight because we understand that there's a lot of interest in attending and we wanted to make certain that anybody who wanted to come had the opportunity to come. We are going to go into executive session but we're going to let our student representative have his presentation first so that he doesn't have to sit up here the whole night. So, Tom, do you want to go ahead and fill us in on what's going on at the high school?
Yeah, our sports have had a great season this year. Our volleyball team had their best ever season this year. Unfortunately, they lost in the first round of the playoffs but they did take, I believe, two out of the five sets against a team that they had never taken any sets from. Our football team last week won their district championship and now on Saturday they're moving into the state semis. The cross-country teams, the girls came in sixth at districts last week which was apparently better than they were projected to do and the guys also did very well. Our field hockey team won districts, I believe, last Wednesday or if not earlier and so they took home a district title which is really exciting and unfortunately they lost in the state semis yesterday to Long Meadow. But they had a great season, fantastic season. They had like five, I think, five players in the All-Star game which should place on Monday which was great. The gov class today went to a simulation at, I think, the Kennedy Politics Center where they went and they simulated, I believe it was the renewal of the Patriot Act and they discussed that and ended up, I think, I think it was split 50-50 down the middle is what it was. We have the winter concert coming up for band in a couple of months, or not called months, in a couple of weeks so band's getting ready for that. Concert band is performing four pieces and the jazz band, two jazz bands are each performing their own. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday we'll have the annual school play up in Neshoba which is always a big hit and we're really excited for that. And then, we've had some different policy changes up at the high school with passes regarding to that and so there's been a little bit like discomfort with that. The students and teachers adjusting to the new rules and not everyone agrees with them but we're dealing with that right now. And then, the chorus concert, winter chorus concert is not, unfortunately not the same time as the band concert but they'll also be performing for the holidays.
Also, does anybody have any questions for Tom?
Thank you.
No, thanks so much.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. We are going to...
Actually, there's a question.
There's a question for Tom?
Yeah. Yes. I just had a question. What was the policy?
Yeah, the, we changed our hall pass rules so it's the first, you can only go your locker the first 10 minutes and you can't go to the bathroom the last 10 minutes and so students don't really like that, some teachers don't really like that.
Okay, also?
Yep.
All right, thank you, Tom. If you want to run, you can.
Right.
Okay. So, we are going to go into executive session and then when we come back to executive session we'll start the public meeting up again and I will, because I know many of you don't come to the meetings and aren't sure how they run, I'm going to go through what the public session is and what the executive session is and some of the ground rules so you understand that this isn't going to be a discussion, it's really a working meeting but we'll, we'll fill you in. So, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy for the superintendent contract and to return into open session.
Okay, do I have a second? And roll call. Lynn?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
I mean, yes?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Okay. You got it.
Do you know where you're going?
Yeah. Thank you. All right. The next, the next, so we're going to come back now to the regular meeting. I just want to give you a quick overview, I mentioned before, that I know a lot of you haven't been to a meeting, a school committee meeting, so I want to give you a quick overview of what the regular meeting is, what the executive sessions are, and then I'm going to tweak the agenda just a little bit. So, this is a regular meeting and this is a meeting that is open to the public but it's a meeting that the school committee uses to conduct school committee business. That means that anybody can come. There's a portion on every one of our meeting agendas that allows for public comment and there are some rules around the public comment and we'll go over those before you folks get up and have your say. The executive sessions are different than the public meetings. The executive sessions are held only as prescribed by the state. There's actually a law that stipulates it. For anybody who cares, it's Chapter 30A, Section 21A of Mass General Law. We've held several executive sessions over the few, past few weeks to discuss the negotiation strategy for the superintendent's contract. The minutes from those executive sessions will be reviewed, they will be approved, and they will be released as soon as the purpose for the sessions have been resolved. So, they will be released but they are not being released right now because we haven't resolved the reason to have those executive sessions, okay? So, this is different from a town meeting or from a regular public meeting where there's a lot of discussion and discourse and that's why we have that public comment section on it. And because of, I think the reason why most of you are here, we're going to flip the agenda and we're going to allow the citizens' comments before we talk about superintendent's resignation. So, if you could, because we've got some time on the agenda, we normally only give five minutes, if there's 10 minutes, excuse me, if I need to give a little bit more, we'll do that. Everyone who wants to talk may not be able to talk and if we find that people have the same pattern of discussions and points, then we may move, move on, okay? So, how many people in the audience would like to speak tonight? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. So, ground rules for citizens' comments. Again, this is dictated by the school district's policy. It is policy B-E-D-H for anyone who needs it and conducting school committee meetings. And I'm going to read this so everybody understands and we're going to hold to this. And we want to hear what you have to say. Clearly, you took the time to come out, we want to hear it, but we also want to make sure that this is done in the spirit of appropriateness on our end and on anyone's end who has something to say. So, this is a chance for you to share your comments. It's not a chance for you to engage us in discussion so don't, I don't want you to be disappointed if you ask us a bunch of questions and we're not answering it. We want to hear what you have to say. Each speaker that has the opportunity to speak will have three minutes to present their comments. And Lynn is going to be keeping track of the time for us.
And Neil's back up, yes.
Pardon?
And Neil's going to back up.
I can't hear what she said.
We can't hear you, Lynn.
Neil's going to help.
Okay. Neil's going to help. Great, Neil's going to help. Please direct your comments to me, lucky me. And then, okay, this is the part that's not fun but, improper conduct and remarks are not allowed, defamatory abusive marks are always out of order. If a speaker persists, persists in improper comments, the chair may terminate the individual's privilege of address. And it's really important that you know that we're not going to listen to and we can't accept complaints about any school personnel or any member of the school community but that includes school committee members. So, we want to hear what you have to say and who wants to go first? Who wants to go first? Can you tell us your name and the town that you're from?
Yes, my name is Don Adams from Lancaster.
Is the mic on?
Is this on?
Try it again.
Is it, is this on?
The other mic has a red, oh, is the other one on?
I think they're hooked up to the TV but not to the... Is this one working?
Oh, there we go.
Yes. Don Adams from Lancaster. After working with Michael Wood for six years, I found him to be capable...
Excuse me, excuse me, I can't hear you. Can you move closer to the mic or? Yeah, we, I want to hear you.
Is this good?
That's better, thank you.
Okay. After working with Michael Wood for six years, I found him capable in every area we encountered, considered, and I consider him at the top of his field. He always seemed proud and engaged with Neshoba and had a desire to stay for, for a long time. He wanted to finish his career here is what he used to tell us. And so, his resignation comes as a real surprise to me. And what's even more surprising is the, the desire to dispose of this matter pretty quickly it seems to me. To me, it's a major change and I'm wondering how that's going to affect our, our candidates for future superintendents. It seems to me there must be some dysfunction between the superintendent, the committee, some other agendas, I'm not sure, but I'm wondering is, is the committee considering something like a Mass Association of School Committees self-assessment to discuss and, and try and resolve or improve their communication with the administrators or amongst themselves so that we present a, a better, a better face to potential candidates? Not that the, you know, the last guy quit that job, how does, you know, what's, what's going on there? So, so I'm wondering, will there be future discussion of what could be done better, where the relationship might have gone off track and, you know, where the public can hear more about this? Because it, you know, raises questions in our mind that it was a quick resignation and it's, you know, there's been very little discussion of this.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming out and stepping up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nancy Fleming, I'm from Stowe and I would like to read a letter that I submitted to the school committee. But Madam Chia, before I do that, and please don't start my timing yet, may I ask why our letters were not posted to the website? I understand there's something to the order of 48 letters and they're not posted. Would you answer that?
I will talk about that, Nancy, in the correspondence section, I will.
You will?
Yep.
All right, well, I will read my letter.
Yep.
To the Neshoba Regional School Committee. I write to express my serious concerns regarding the sudden and unexpected resignation of Michael Wood. As you are aware, Michael was hired as superintendent of our district in 2003 during a very difficult time. Through his impressive and capable leadership, financial security was restored as was the confidence of our community. Over 13 years, Michael has consistently received positive evaluations for his job performance. He has assembled strong administrative teams and has hired and retained excellent teachers and staff for each of our schools. By any measure, our students routinely perform well and families are attracted to our towns on the strength of our school system. Michael's interactions with town administrators and town boards are conducted with the utmost professionalism. He is able to represent and defend the educational needs of our towns and remain collegial and effective in the most challenging situations. During his tenure, Michael has provided stability to our community of which he and his family are members. He has lived in Stowe this entire time, his children attend our schools, and he has appeared to find his job fulfilling and satisfying. This past June, two school committee members simultaneously resigned from the committee citing the contentious environment as the reason. Many of you are new to the school committee. I have reviewed minutes and I wonder if you understand your role as school committee members and your boundaries. Absent an explanation to the contrary, I can only conclude that Michael Wood was denied process and that his inexplicable resignation is the result of a rogue agenda being advanced by some members of the committee. In the interest of fairness to Michael Wood and in the best interest of our community, I urge you to reconsider your vote to accept his resignation. Short of that, I urge you to consider, consider offering your own resignation.
Nancy, do you want to finish?
The challenge of finding and retaining a superintendent of schools is a local and national problem. I expect any candidate qualified to be superintendent of the Neshoba Regional School District would be hesitant to report to a board with your history. Please enter this letter into correspondence and include in the corresponding meeting packet. Thank you sincerely, me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
I'm Nancy Fetterspiel from Bolton. I resigned from the school committee in my seventh year of service. I've spent a lot of time on the school committee and know very intimately what was going on and what continues to go on. Please, I only have three minutes if I can't get in...
Nancy, you need to address, address us, not the crowd.
Okay.
Thanks.
Since I only have three minutes right now and I need to read my letter because it was not posted, even though that's been protocol for years and years and years, I'm going to not spend my time on why I resigned, but please, ask me why I resigned. I'd be happy to tell you and my guess is that some of the reasons are similar to Michael's reasons. Here's my letter that didn't get posted. Dear School Committee Members, I am appalled by the recent turn of events concerning the resignation of Superintendent Michael Wood. How could you let him go? I am certain that his departure will be detrimental to the Neshoba Regional School District on many fronts and ask that you reconsider your decision. Superintendent Wood has been a dedicated and competent leader of our school district for the last 13 years. He rescued our district from financial difficulties due to previous financial mishandling. He has managed a balanced budget since its arrival and continues to work to find cost savings on an annual basis. His budget management skills are clearly a strength that our district has benefited from and should continue to do so. Equally as important, things are going really well for the Neshoba Regional School District. Why would you want to pull the rug out from underneath the administrative team at such a positive time in the district's history? Graduation rates are up, school activity participation is at a record high, Neshoba athletics are having unprecedented successes, rankings are going up, test scores by cohort are going up, diversity of course offerings are going up, just to name a few of the positive trends. Why take out the leader who has helped make this possible? Having a stable and longstanding superintendent in our district has been one of its strengths. Many of the districts in this area have had revolving doors to their superintendent's office. In the time that Wood has been our superintendent since 2003, the following neighboring districts have had multiple superintendents. Harvard's had four, Berland-Boylston has had five, Hudson's had five, Marlboro had five, Bratton-Dunstable had four, just to name a few. Having turnover in the superintendent's position hurts the district. It lowers staff and community morale, it costs time and energy in search efforts and causes delays due to learning curves. We don't know what the search will reveal for candidates and how long the new one might stay. Why are you subjecting us to this uncertainty? I worked with Superintendent Wood for over six years as a school committee member and its chair. While I didn't always agree with him, I found him to be extremely professional and respectful. I also am well aware that his performance reviews have been quite positive. How is it that this current committee has come to the conclusion in such a short period of time that it would not be in the best interest or try to keep him in the district?
Okay, Nancy, you got to wrap it up.
Please, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt but it's, I got to, that's great, I need you to wrap it up.
Okay, I have two more sentences.
Thanks.
Please think about the impact to the district and don't let personal differences sway your decisions. Please, for the sake of NRSD, reconsider letting Superintendent Wood go.
My name is Amy Keough and I live in Stowe and I am coming here both as a parent in the district and a teacher in the district. I want to reiterate some of the information that Nancy just spoke about as well in terms of the positive things that we see in this district. I think it's amazing to know that Mr. Wood not only runs this district but has his children in this district and that, as people have also mentioned, that he is a part of this community. I think as a parent and a teacher in this school system, to know that the leader of this school system has such a, an important role both as our superintendent but also as a parent is an amazing thing to think about. And the fact that he's been our superintendent for 13 years, taking over at a time when the school was in such financial ruins and to be able to turn that around in less than two years or in a two-year period of time is unbelievable and to point out the longevity of his tenure here in the district is amazing. We just don't get that and that is something that people point out in teacher roles, to be able to have a teacher that's, you know, a good teacher that stays in the district, stays in a position and to be able to have that in our superintendent is an amazing quality and something that makes, I think, as, both as parents and teachers in this district feel so confident to be able to come into this school, into these towns, to have somebody who has run the district in such an amazing way. We know as teachers in this district, the assessment tools that we are using now to assess us have become a little bit more challenging over the years, but to know that Mr. Wood has certainly as, as early or as late, as recently as May, received all professions in his performance evaluation, it's hard to know why, with all the positive things that are happening in this district, why the school committee would accept his resignation and not do everything they possibly can to, you know, potentially change his mind. How can we keep you here, Mr. Wood, at a time when our district is doing such amazing things? Our graduation rates have increased, our athletic programs have been amazing over the last years and their, you know, their, their winnings, the standardized test scores have been improving, our state rankings are up, the budget, you know, has been balanced for so many years. As a parent who has a child in the special ed program, the services that she's received over these many years have been amazing and that I have to feel comes from the top on down and to be able to know that my daughter who's graduating next year will be able to go off to college because of the support services she has provided is amazing. So, I just don't understand why it is at this point you wouldn't be doing everything possible to say, hey, Mr. Wood, we need you to stay. You're a leader in this committee, in this community, in this district and we want you to stay because of our school district being in such great shape. As a teacher in this, in the, in the community, in the district, you know, we get a sense of how things are going and for the most part, we think things are going well. And I feel so fortunate to be both a parent and a teacher in this community and I'm hoping that you will reconsider accepting his resignation.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Kim Jiswalde and I'm a parent as well as a paraprofessional in the district. I work in the special needs class and I also have three kids who have been either on IEPs or are still on IEPs and receive services. Number one, I don't, I would say 90% of the district has no idea this is going on and that's really unfortunate. Shame on us, number one, we don't watch it and I will say a lot of people are going to be watching a lot closer now, but I really feel that in not knowing this, you don't understand how many, how many children we have in our special needs program that move into the district because of the services. They move in, they're paying taxes for these services in the special needs classes. They, that my own children receive these services, whether I always agree with the special needs, I always understand that. The children do come first in this district and I really feel with this, with letting Mr. Wood go, the children are not coming first, their needs are not being seen because really I feel that from the top, this is what we've always looked for is the number one, the number one place of the children and I just, I don't agree with accepting his resignation as a parent first and as an employee. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Gothy. I am a resident of Stowe and I'm also an employee in the district. I like you to forgive me if I sound repetitive, I'm going to be reading my email as well. I am also here speaking with great concern for the resignation of Mr. Wood. I am certain that his departure will be absolutely detrimental to our district in many ways and I'm requesting that you please reconsider your decision to accept his resignation. I know that in the past 13 years while my kids have been going to school here, I've been extremely proud for them to be students of the Neshoba Regional School District and I feel that they were as proud as I was when I went through as a young girl myself. He not only, this is very repetitive, but I have the statistics about, you know, rescuing the district from financial probation and can speak to the fact that I don't feel the students felt any impact of him trying to disperse the resources in a way to make them receive a meaningful education. He has extremely high expectations for our district but he leads by example. From what I have read, he's also received a rating of proficient in all past evaluations which I know I strive to do and it's very important to me and I'm sure he works very hard to do that for himself. I've also personally witnessed schools being built, special education and remedial support staffing increasing. Just over the past few years, we've gained math specialists, reading specialists at all of the elementary school levels. Every year, we gain a little bit more support for our students. The students receive highly qualified instruction on all levels and they're presented with highly regarded research-based materials that we're presented to as a staff that we get to pilot and test and our input is used in order to choose those materials. The personal side of Mr. Wood shines through as well. On this level, I've witnessed him walk down the halls and address and say hello to each teacher by name. And he also signed up to be the first celebrity gorilla at my new concession stand. I only had to ask once and he was there. He's also been seen at many student activities on campus and off. As an educator that lives and works in the district, I can also speak to the level of professional development that has been provided, the level of support from administration that we feel and the level of comfort that we have knowing our vegetarian items will be carefully considered and fairly evaluated. I would also like to speak to the level of shock that befell the staff the morning we got the copy of his resignation letter. Some teachers and staff members were teary-eyed, all were in shock and they couldn't believe that this was a possibility that our leader was leaving. We had no indication that something was wrong. We had no understanding of how his strengths did not match the goals or expectations of the district any longer. If that was the case, we would have felt it in a way that the schools are run, supplied, and led. In your closing statement at the school committee meeting on the 28th, you commented on Mr. Wood's love for the students and staff of the district. Clearly, this has been demonstrated consistently over the past 13 years.
Time.
Is my time up?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Why would you let this highly regarded district be in the hands of anyone else? It makes me wonder what is going on. It certainly does not seem the decision of the families that are mutually represented by the school committee understand your decision to accept his resignation. So, please consider your prior decision with the utmost of care because the future of our town's children is depending on it. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Linda. Okay. One second, one second, one second, one second, one second. Is anybody else, because we're, does anybody else have any other topic they want to address? You do, okay. And then, and you have another topic you want to address as well? Okay, let's, please.
Hi, I'm Troy Hatlovich from Crescent Street in Stowe. I, I guess it's not a new topic, I do want to address the, the situation with the superintendent but I have a different viewpoint, I think, than the previous people. I said it's not a new topic but I think I have a different viewpoint than the previous people who spoke and so, okay. So, I'm from Crescent Street in Stowe, so I feel what a lot of people said. First of all, I think there's little question that Mr. Wood is and has been a terrific superintendent. superintendent for us, rescuing the district when it was in shambles in two thousand two. And just about the time that crisis ended, he had to rescue it again because of the financial crisis and all of the budget cutbacks and everything else that went on. But he runs a tight ship, and Neshoba today has a solid reputation as a quality district with a good staff and an engaged parent base, and I think every parent and taxpayer in Stowe owes him a debt of gratitude for that. But as we've transitioned out of crisis mode over the last few years, anyone who keeps an eye on these things closely knows that his command and control style that had everyone lining up behind him during the crisis was starting to cause some frustration in the communities and, you know, in the school committee. For example, the performance review that people have mentioned, if you take a look at that, there are several items where there are two people who rate him as outstanding and two people who rate him as needs improvement on the exact same item. And it's the same with the comments throughout that performance review. So, so, you know, opinion on his leadership has certainly varied widely over the last few years, right? So in the last election cycle in our town in Stowe, we had a pretty clear referendum. We had my preferred candidate, Maureen Bush, who ran on incremental education-focused change against Mark Jones, who ran on more budget-oriented change and more focused on looking at aggressive reforms, including potentially leadership at the top. And, you know, I think Mark was one hundred percent upfront with that being what he was focused on, and, you know, Mark ended up winning the election in our town and winning it handily. So, you know, I think that what happened there in Stowe reflected what happened throughout all of the rest of the elections as well. And elections matter, right? Elections, elections do matter. But the comments tonight matter also, so I hope you weigh both of those as you're making a decision going forward. You know, I'll just, I'll just also say that, you know, I think that rather than telling you how to vote, finally, I think I'll just say that I really appreciate the fact that you guys made this decision unanimously among the committee and with the superintendent last time. And so what I'll ask you to do is, if you decide to rethink your decision, Mr. Wood, if you decide to rethink your decision to resign, and school committee, if you decide to rethink your decision to, your vote, I just ask you to make sure that it's unanimous so that the community knows that we're either all one hundred percent behind whatever decision you end up making. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Cannon, I'm from Lancaster. I've had three children that have been extremely successful going through this district ever since Mr. Wood's been here. Thank you, Mr. Wood. But I'm really confused, you know, I'm listening to all this, and I guess the first thing is, you're in executive session to discuss the superintendent's contract, but the superintendent resigned and you accepted that, so what's the contract to discuss? So if you could hopefully help us with that, that would be great. The other thing I'm confused about is, obviously, this is going to cost the district additional money. What are the students going to lose out of to get that additional money? To pay for a search for an interim superintendent, which are very expensive, and then, of course, the whole search for another superintendent? Students are going to lose something out of this. What is that going to be? And if you could answer that later on, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Lee York. I'm from Stowe. I have three boys in the system. I'm also an educator. I teach high school in Wayland, and I also wrote a letter. I don't know a lot about the ins and outs of what's gone on in meetings, and I've been very happy with the schools, and so from there, I've been happy with the job that Mr. Wood has done. But one thing that impressed me very much after being in Wayland is watching a school be built and the extraordinary difficulty of being at the helm when that happens, being in the science department in Wayland. I mean, we had a lot of input on things that I'm not an expert on, and you have to make umpteen million decisions on things that are very difficult, and the person at the helm of that is, you know, ultimately responsible for keeping it under budget, and I know they have committees, but I was very impressed after watching the process in Wayland and comparing that to Stowe, and after also seeing what happened when it gets out of control, as we all heard what happened in Newton when they built the Taj Mahal and practically bankrupted the town. So I think that's something that it just, really, for me, it was very impressive to see someone's executive powers be able to keep that under control. So I know I have other thoughts, but they've mostly been said, and I just also wanted to thank you all, though, for your, your service, because I know you're volunteers, and it's a difficult thing, so.
Thank you. All right. Clearly, our superintendent has a lot of support from the community. And we certainly, you can't, no one has ever told me they can't hear me. And, and we do appreciate the years of service and the contributions that Michael has made, and, and nobody is taking that away from Michael. And I just want to reiterate what happened at the last meeting, because it did come up fast. We, at the last meeting, announced, or Michael announced his resignation, and we voted to accept his resignation. And, you know, that came at the end of the meeting at Michael's request. We wanted it to come at the beginning of the meeting, but it didn't. It came at the end of the meeting. I know that there were questions about it, and at the time, it was unanimously accepted by the committee. You know, there's some, there are some comments that are made here and in the letters that are not quite accurate, but I don't want to get into refuting that because I don't think it's productive. But I do think that you folks need to realize that we have taken everything that we have done extremely seriously. We put a lot of thought, we put a lot of collaboration. These people work really hard, and if you're not observing our subcommittee meetings, and if you're not able to read some of those subcommittee minutes, then you aren't really seeing the work that's being done. I think that we all believe we have a good, stable district. I think we all believe that. And I think that Mr. Wood has done a fabulous job getting us to this point. But one person doesn't make a district, and I, I think that it's almost unfair to, with all due respect, but it's almost unfair to the educators and to the staff to not give credit where it belongs. And certainly, Michael has led the organization for that period of time. I, I get that. But the stability of an organization isn't solely on one person's shoulders. That would be unrealistic. I want you to understand that everything that we do, everything that we have done, everything that we continue to do is done for the students. There are things that, that we can talk about, and we do talk about, and our minutes are ridiculously detailed so that we can be transparent, and those are in all of our subcommittee folders and our school committee folders, and whatever material and whatever discussion we can have and share, we do. And I know that Mr. Wood said in his resignation letter, he realizes it's time for another leader to work with us to go to the next level. It doesn't mean that the work that's been done is not worthy and not excellent and not gotten us to where we are, but I think that we all believe that we need to respect that decision, honor that decision, and I know that you're looking for answers. And I, I'm telling you that as soon as we can legally provide information to you, we will, we will do that. For now, we are giving you as much as we can, we are giving you everything that we can. But until we get to a point where we can release additional information, we are going to honor and respect the decision that was made. Okay. We need to move into, the, I want to know if anybody has any thoughts on making a motion on the superintendent's resignation. Kathy.
I move that we accept the superintendent's letter of resignation of October twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, effective June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All right, discussion. We're in the middle of a vote. No, you're going to have to hold off, I'm sorry. Does, does anybody have any discussion? Does anybody have anything they want to add? Okay. Are we ready? All those in favor? One, two, Lynn, Mark, Rain, Nicole, Kathy, Neil. All those opposed? Kathy Tieran. The motion passes. We're going to move into the next portion of our agenda. Citizens' comments, we've already taken care of that, new business. We actually have some exciting things to talk about tonight, some positive things to talk about, and that is, the first one on the agenda is the one-to-one Chromebook Initiative. This is a new initiative that the district undertook this year, and I think we've got a presentation. I think we need to move.
Yes, the screen will be coming down, and we have our three ELA teachers from each of our middle schools, and our friend, principal at Luther Burbank Middle School is going to be the spokesperson to start us off and introduce our special guest, which is one of our students from Luther Burbank.
quite at the drop of the hat, saying, "Of course, we'll present," sharing all the great things that are happening as a result of our one-to-one initiative with our Google Chromebooks this year. I cannot tell you the amazing learning that's happening as a result of this new tool. So to talk to you a little bit more about what it actually looks like in the classroom, I'd like to introduce you to Jen Campbell, who is our ELA teacher from Lancaster, Luther Burbank Middle School, and our amazing student. Look at that face. Evan McDonald, who's an eighth-grade student at Luther Burbank. Following up Ms. Campbell will be Cassie Sprey, who's our eighth-grade ELA teacher at the Florence Sawyer School in Bolton, and then following up Cassie Sprey, who's our eighth-grade ELA teacher from Yale. Turn it over to Evan.
First, thank you very much for having me here today. When we were told that we could invite a student, Evan's name was the first thing that popped into my head, because Evan is always, always enthusiastic about using Chromebooks in my classroom. So Evan and I are going to try to do this quickly and present some information to you. So when I asked Evan what's the first thing he wanted me to talk about, the Chromebook sees, I mentioned Kahoot. So Evan, would you like to explain what Kahoot is?
Yeah, I'll do it. Kahoot. Okay. Kahoot is a game we play that is not only a game, but it's a way for the teachers to educate us as students. It is a multiple-choice quiz game where the students create a quiz on whatever subject they teach, and they quiz us, and the students have points recorded on their speed and if they answer the correct answer. And the students love this game because it's competitive. You put in your name, and after you answer the question, it shows the top five on the leaderboard, which really gets the students very excited.
So as you can see, we have some quotes here. I asked a couple of students in my classes what they thought. So a student named Chris said it adds competition. Students like competitions because they want to meet their friends. And it helps you review so you know what you need to study. And then Aiden said you can play a game and learn at the same time. So Evan and I are just going to show a little demonstration, a quick demonstration of what Kahoot is. This is why we're using Kahoot to review our vocabulary words. We have a quiz on Friday, so we can use that to review them. So do you want to explain the process and how we start in class?
Well, we'll start in class with Ms. Campbell will hit play for the game, and the students go to kahoot.it where they'll enter the game pin that will be showed on our, Ms. Campbell will put it up on the smartboard, and once the students enter the game pin...
And then, if you can hear it, it has this fun music that the students look to dance to as they're logging in. So when the name pops up on the screen, that means a student has logged in. One of their favorite things to do is to use their nicknames to put smiley faces with their names. All right, so I see that Evan's in, so usually I count how many students I have in the classroom, and then when I know that they're all in, I can start. And so I hope Evan studies vocab words. So the definition is indifferent board as a result of having enjoyed many pleasures. And so the screen, the student's screen will look like this, and then they have to choose the corresponding one. So I'm being timed right now, and I'm not answering, so. And then the screen then tells you if you're correct or not. And then it tells me what students picked and how many they got correct. And then we can move to the scoreboard, and I see that Evan answered the question more quickly, so we got more points, but he also got it right, so we got points. And then we continue on into the various next questions. And then at the end of Kahoot, I can get a formative assessment spreadsheet that tells me the answers all the students got, what they got wrong, and then that helps me focus on what I need to reteach for them. So it's a great game. They want to, we played it today, they're playing it tomorrow, study your vocab. So the next thing I just want to briefly talk about is, my students just finished a short story, a short story unit, and what they did was, they had to read a short story, one that we did in each class, and then they had to do various things with it. So they had to do a Venn diagram, talk about the theme, talk about the characters, and then they had to do a Google Slide presentation, and then they Screencastify it. So do you want to explain what Screencastify is?
Screencastify, to end our unit in our short story unit, we had a presentation, we picked a short story, and we had to present it by making a Google Slide presentation using Screencastify. Instead of taking up so much class time as we did last year when we did presentations, you can record on your screen, and the recording will record your screen, and also it'll record what you say, so you can explain your presentation while you're recording it at home, so it doesn't take up any class time, so the teachers can teach what they want.
So a student, Ben, said, "I liked using Screencastify because I didn't have to present in front of the class. I don't like giving that." So it was really useful for the students who may be a little hesitant to speak in front of the other students. So the example I have is Evan's example, so if you want to just give a little synopsis of your short story.
The short story I picked was "The Landlady" by Roald Dahl, and it was about, and so we had to make twelve slides, and a couple of the slides were, "What is a short story?" which will probably be the one shown, Ms. Campbell's. And I, we also had to present, what's called storyboard that, which is "You Make Your Own Comic Strip," is shown up here, and it has to explain different scenes of the story.
Yeah, I had no support now. For the first ten seconds, I didn't have any support.
Hi, this is Evan McDonald, and I did "The Landlady" by Roald Dahl. What's a short story is the first slide, and my answer was, "A short story is a complete work of fiction."
What's a short story is the first slide, and my answer was a short story is a Greek work of fiction that came here in one city. They developed a single idea through a plot, and Jen was pointing to setting in the, my second slide was conflict, and I found two conflicts.
So we could watch the full eight minutes. I don't think we need to do that. So that was our example of Screencastify. Um, and then the last thing that I really use our Chromebooks for is for quizzes, um, and assessments. I create Google Forms for the vocabulary quizzes. So on Friday, when Evan takes his vocab quiz, he will take out his Chromebook and he will, um, take a quiz on there. Um, or they will, they will, um, be given the definition, and then they'll have a dropdown menu and help to pick the vocabulary word. Um, at the end of that vocab quiz, that goes into a form, and I use a program called Fluburu, which will then grade the multiple choice and pull-down menu options for me. So it eliminates the process of grading for me, does it much more quickly. Um, it doesn't ruin the integrity of the quiz, but it makes sense on my end, much more efficient. And then I can email the results to the students, and so they're always looking at their email and asking, "When are you gonna send that to us?" Um, so it's a much more efficient and quicker process. Do you want to add anything else about that?
Yeah, I'll say that, uh, Ms. Campbell and probably the other teachers love the Google Slides that you can present quizzes with, because they don't have to take the time to grade it, and students can just, and the students can just do whatever they want on their Chromebook and don't bother Ms. Campbell after.
I cannot tell how to say that. Um, so just overall, the Chromebooks have just been so useful. Um, I use them almost every day in my classroom, and really they are just enhancing the learning, and they're not just diminishing anything that we're doing in the classroom. So thank you very much for having myself and for Evan.
Thank you.
Next up in the presentation is Cassie Spray from the Florence Sawyer School.
I'd like to thank you for listening to our presentation tonight. I think the first thing that I really want to make sure that everybody knows is prior to this year, we really had to, as an ELA teacher, I kind of had to pick my battles as to when I could use the technology because I didn't have it one-to-one. I knew I had to save, although we all share the resources, I knew I needed to save my time with the Chromebooks for writing purposes. Now that my students have them every single day, I have been able to increase my use of technology in all areas of the ELA curriculum. One thing that I wanted to point out, and I think probably we are all using, is Google Classroom. Google Classroom is, is an organized method for me to be able to present instruction to my students. Uh, for example, I had to be absent when my son had surgery, and I could do a flipped classroom approach. So it was as if I was still at school, communicating with my kids. I was able to email kids, although I was in school, I was still available during their class time. They were receiving the lesson through Google Classroom, and it made a much more, a much, it was very seamless in the way the presentation went. Um, I love that it allows the kids access to the content that I use in the classroom day-to-day, whether it's a video or reading. Some kids need to view these more than once, and Classroom allows me to do this. It's linked to students' Google Drive accounts, and so it automatically organizes their material for them. So I just wanted to give you a glimpse as to what Google Classroom looks like. So this is a snapshot of things that have gone on in my classroom since day one this year. And I'm not going to go through the whole year with you. Uh, but right now, my students are working on, uh, movie trailers, which I will show you in a few minutes. But I have provided them with video links, links for free sound effects, or background music. Prior to that, they had a tutorial which they could view, again, they did it at school, and they could view again for homework. We had sample movie trailers, et cetera. You can see there have been reading assignments. This is kind of like a student's virtual notebook, so to speak, in ELA. And it also gives them the opportunity, it's, I guess a feed, it would be the best way I can explain it, a feed of what goes on in my classroom on a day-to-day basis. Kids can share this with their parents, kids have this great kind of archive of everything that they've done in ELA all year so far. As I mentioned before, I use the Chromebooks quite often for writing. One thing that I really love about the Chromebooks is it gives us the ability to collaborate as writers. A big genre of writing that my students are learning about this year is the literary analysis. And what I have found is that kids are great with answering the questions, with finding the right support for their answers, but putting all of that together into a literary analysis was very difficult for them. So we were able to, as a group, collaborate on a very well-written essay. And you can see that this is color-coded and it's annotated. My comments will be coming up. The kids now have, we went through this together, and we talked about, well, where would the thesis statement go? They've color-coded the thesis statement in Read, and they have two comments in the margins. So now they have a great exemplar that they can then return to again and again. Well, it's time for them to do another literary analysis more independently. In Read, oh, sorry. In Reading, um, one thing, it's really minimized the number of printed copies I have to make. Um, students have been learning how to read and annotate right on an electronic document. And, um, as with Ms. Campbell's classroom, we're also finishing up a unit on short stories. And we have decided to take the approach of turning, my students read short stories and learn through circle groups. And their job is to sell their story to their classmates by creating a movie trailer, which is persuasive in nature. So I'm not going to show you the whole movie trailer, but I want you to be able to get a sense of what it would look like. This is based on "Lamb to the Slaughter" by Roald Dahl. Oh, my sound isn't coming up. Mr. Bates, do you know how to get this, the sound in? Alright, sorry. I guess they don't need to really hear the music, just, just to get a sense of. There we go. If you want a vocab, you'll have to go see the. Just a different take, I keep showing the comprehension. For grammar and vocabulary, I have also used what's called, uh, I've used the Chromebooks on a day-to-day basis. I use what's called a hyperdoc, which is really what it sounds like. It's a document with hyperlinks in it. Um, so one of our daily practices is a program called Katia Daily Grammar. Um, it's written by Jane Balkeaster. Not my idea, just, I just use it. Um, Katia is a daily editing assignment that teaches grammar, usage, mechanics, sentence structure, literary elements, when to paragraph, vocabulary, et cetera. The hyperdoc, which I've been using this year, I really like because it allows for an integrated approach to teaching the language skills all in one document. So this is a sample of our first grammar lesson. What happens when the kids come into the classroom is they're going to see, say, this first sentence is written incorrectly. They make the corrections, and the corrections are made in red. And you can see there are comments along the side. The comments explain the grammar. So for example, friend in the original was spelled incorrectly. So they would correct the word, and they would say the correction needed to be done because there was a spelling error, or they would need to capitalize the letter, the first letter in Isabel because it is a proper noun. So it's a two-step process, making the correction and then explaining why it needs to be done. Also linked within this hyperdoc is I am able to teach grammar mini lessons right through the document. So for example, they gave them a hint, do they need to have a new paragraph? If they're not sure, they can click on the link that says here, and they, they can re, take a little review lesson. A new skill in this first one. A new skill was homophones. Now, because that was a new skill, I not only wanted them to participate in the lesson, I needed them to do something with it. So you can see that, um, below the Katia. I asked them, I asked them some questions to show me that they understand the less, the mini lesson on, um, homophones. Linked to this, and this particular Katia does not have, this, this particular sentence does not have a vocabulary word linked to it, but the words that have vocabulary words linked to them go directly to my Quizlet page, which is a vocabulary kind of quizzing. They could, they can define the words, they can play video, they can play games with them, um, much like with the Kahoot. Thank you.
So I'd like to introduce, uh, Mike Turpin, who's the eighth grade teacher at Hale for ELA. And at Hale, especially our eighth grade team, has been a pioneer in using, uh, online technology, and the one-on-one initiative with the Chromebooks has really added an extra level that I think will, uh, continue to enhance the students', uh, experience and learning. So Mike, I guess as soon as you're ready there.
Okay, so, um, one of the things that I wanted to spotlight was simply how I use Classroom on a day-to-day basis. And one of the things that, um, thankfully Cassie didn't mention was the Push to Students feature, which allows for instant real-time sharing of materials that I might be looking at on my screen. It allows me to sort of simultaneously distribute them to, um, any students that happen to be in front of me. So. If, for example, I'm looking at this, I want to give them some information on George Orwell. It brings up a list of my classes. And I simply hit Push to Students, and they'll kind of go along the, uh, corresponding action. They'll have it waiting for them, uh, right in their browser. They can call it up, and we can literally all be on the same page. And, uh, my favorite thing about Classroom here, and, um, I think Cassie have already spotlighted it, was that it allows for all materials, handouts, rubrics, et cetera, associated with one assignment to be attached to that assignment for ease of student use. It's really cut down on a lot of, um, I, I've been using, Google Drive is sort of like a makeshift version of Google Classroom for a number of years now. And even when you shared a document with a student, a lot of the time they would say, "Well, where is that? I can't find it. You didn't share it with me." Um, and it was frustrating for them because they really wanted to get to work, but they just couldn't find everything because it's not necessarily, it wasn't necessarily designed for that. Um, thankfully, Google kind of read my mind, figured out what I wanted to do, and adjusted accordingly. And I'm finding, uh, from my end, now that, uh, as was mentioned before, we don't necessarily have to think so much about sharing the technology we have, since every student has it in front of them, it's allowing me to have students write more often, and, uh, sort of more prolifically as well in class. And it allows us to monitor that writing in real time as well. Uh, this helps me to get a longer, more useful look at how students are working. I can monitor it from my own computer without necessarily having them feel like I'm lingering over their shoulder for an awkwardly long time. And it also helps me to fix some of their errors before it's too late. If I can look at what they're doing as they're writing, it allows me to go in, leave a comment. They can fix it at their convenience, and they can make those errors oftentimes before the initial draft is even officially submitted. Uh, the other tool I wanted to take a look at is called Noodle Tools. And Noodle Tools allows for documentation and organization of student research materials. Um, research papers, to nobody's surprise, are not every eighth grader's favorite thing to do. Um, so what this does is help them see tangible results of organizing their work. Uh, they no longer lose note cards, they no longer miss document sources, as Noodle Tools has a number of features that help students figure out what should go where. And it helps to prepare them for high school and collegiate research standards as well. Uh, the great thing about Noodle Tools, and this can also be done through another, uh, Google Docs add-on known as EasyBib, that generates a works cited list automatically, which can then be sent directly to Drive, um, copied and pasted right into the paper that you're working with. So this is what I see if I've assigned something. Uh, this shows me all of the projects that are shared with me. From here, I can check in on any student's project and take a look, see their progress. And it really helps me to have a better handle on what every student, um, has done, needs to do, where I need to target for assistance on an individual level as well. Um, in the past, it simply wouldn't have been possible. Either I would have their materials and they wouldn't be able to work with them, or they would have their materials, I would be able to see them. We'd be using time, uh, in class to sort of have, you know, one-on-one check-ins and, and review the materials. Now I can review the materials and then address student needs accordingly. And this is a view of what these note cards might look like when organized. As you can see, they're sort of sorted into piles. Um, and there's an outline, uh, over to the right, which allows students to take their ideas, sort them, organize them, and sort of manipulate them, drag them around, uh, for their own comfort. So it's really giving them, um, a lot of experience in what is oftentimes a very tricky and challenging area for them. And because I want you to be able to see, uh, one of the note cards is one of the samples that I made to show them, uh, for their projects. It allows you to directly quote, um, from a source, in this case, Animal Farm. It allows you to paraphrase. And then it allows a section for your own ideas, uh, in. And then it allows a section for your own ideas in input. The most common form of feedback that I've gotten from students about this, since we are currently doing this, is, "Wow, this made writing my paper a lot easier. I did not enjoy this note card process. However, I've really enjoyed how much more accessible it's made all the information, how much easier it's been to go from organizing to writing." And as a result of being to write, being able to have access to the Chromebooks on a daily basis, they've been able to become a lot more comfortable with writing. And I think also being able to access so many digital resources on a daily basis has allowed them to sort of augment their own ideas and become more effective at adding quotes, adding support, which is something that, as English teachers, we're always looking for them to do. Thank you.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move along. We're gonna, we're gonna have to move a couple of things over. I think what we're gonna do is the SRO overview right now. And Michael, you can speak on behalf of the principal.
Actually, he's here.
Oh.
So...
Dr. Graham, come, come up! And we also have our town administrator and chief of police from Bolton. And...
Can we backtrack just a quick second?
What's mine?
Can I follow up on some questions on the one-on-one?
Oh. Well, Michael, you gotta do them.
That's fine.
Just, well, it's just a couple. You probably know. So I noticed that, I don't know if it was a coordinated presentation, because everybody sort of had like different programs that they were using, or because this is new, everyone's sort of experimenting with different ones, and are they getting, I was just wondering if they're getting feedback at the end and kind of, gonna kind of do what works for themselves, or create like a standard for each district?
So, I think it's a little bit of both. So most of those programs, like Kahoot and Fluburu and things like that, are pushed out through our tech, digital learning coordinator and the ITS in the building. So they're all using that, and it's available to them. Things that are, Google Classroom is all available to all of them. They all use it to varying degrees. And then they personalize it in terms of how they use it. I don't know if you want to add?
No, I agree. I mean, all the tools you saw were district tools. It's just simply, they're using different tools to, you know...
Different emphasis.
Yeah, with their different emphasis and just different approaches. But like Mike did the Google Classroom use, which is more overall, you know, structural use of the program. But I know they use Kahoot and stuff like that, too. That's, that's a very popular program amongst all kids with the Chromebooks.
So at year end, is there gonna be like a survey or so forth, both teachers and students on the initiative?
Yes. We're, we're looking now actually at more of the training that they're gonna do in January, and some of that debriefing is gonna happen there as we try to move this into the freshman year. So something's gonna happen at that point, and then at the end of the year.
Thank you.
I have a question about assessments. One of the teachers said that they can assess right, right away. Can this be like applied across all the, the district determined measures that are, so if, if, what I liked about it is it doesn't feel so much like a test for the kid.
Right, right.
They're doing, they're doing their work, they're not being tested. So...
I think many of the district determined measures could be, could be used by some of these assessment software. I'm not sure all of them can. So I know some at the high school are using Mastery Manager, for example, which isn't as game-oriented, but it's, it's definitely digital. But definitely as we're moving more and more towards the understanding how to use the, the district determined measures, we're trying to figure out also how to make them more valuable to both kids and teachers, and using technology would be one of the ways.
And as Google add-ons like Fluburu become more efficient, we can do more things with it. Soon as you did the presentation the other day, showing us how you can use some open-ended responses and things like that now, and how it works well to do that. You can email, you know, to, right to the kids their score.
Any other questions on the one-on-one? Nope? Okay, now we're ready. So the reason that this is on the agenda is because we've heard good things about the SRO. We're hoping that from the high school perspective and then from the officer's perspective, you can tell us how it's going. I know that at this point, we have a part-time SRO. And how long have we had that SRO?
This is the third year we have had that SRO.
This is our 30th. Okay. So how's it going?
What's the acronym?
Officer.
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 Yeah, do you want to?
Over there.
Then maybe you can see.
Uh-oh.
I think it's only on over there.
Just come up here, Perry.
Stay right here for me, that's easy.
Can you hear me?
Is this on? So from my perspective, the SRO position has been, is incredibly effective. Officer Eric Kukos is the school resource officer, Bolton Police Officer, who's at the school. He's with us three days a week. He's a wonderful presence on campus. I would say first and foremost, he's a safety presence. He's out in the building the entire day. He's in the halls, he's in the cafeteria. Occasionally, we'll poke his head into classrooms. He's in meetings with us. And I think that he's not an imposing presence. He's done a lot to try to make himself a very approachable presence in the building. He's an imposing, an imposing presence if he needs to be, which is very, relatively rarely. He's a very approachable presence, but he's a presence that inspires a lot of safety on the part of students and a lot of part, on the part of staff. I surveyed the staff and students last year to get feedback from them about the SRO program. It was very positive feedback. I don't have the results with me right now, so unfortunately, I'm sorry, I don't, can't give you very specifics. But overwhelmingly positive feedback about the SRO program. Officer Kukos does a wonderful job of building relationships in the building. Students approach him on a regular basis just to say, "Hi, how's it going?" But that sense of relationship also allows him to then, if something comes up, he's able to work with students to try to resolve things. And one of the, the key things that he's done is he's been a great liaison between the Bolton Police and us, where he's someone who understands the school, how school rules work. But he also understands the police and the law enforcement side. And so he serves as a liaison. So when you have over a thousand teenagers in the same space for 180 days, unfortunately, stuff happens sometimes. What he's able to do when stuff happens is he's able to help us resolve it in as effective a way as possible, and to the greatest extent possible, help us resolve it internally rather than externally. However, when something is serious enough, he also is able to work with us to help to resolve that externally. So if we have a situation where we have a student who might have been physically aggressive towards someone, sexually aggressive towards someone, he's able to work with us. But then, if there also need to be remedies outside of the building, he's able then to be the liaison on the outside. But generally speaking, he helps us resolve things internally. So I've found him to be tremendously helpful. He's participated on different emergency preparation teams that we have in the building. When we do lockdown drills, when we do canine searches, he's our liaison with the Bolton Police. He helps us to arrange that. He helps to give us feedback about how that goes. He helps us to prepare for those things. You know, we've got some new lockdown procedures in the district. He's been kind of our liaison to help us do that. So from my perspective, it's been a fantastic partnership.
Right. Chief, you wanna, how's it going from your perspective?
There's not much else I can say. Dr. Graham covered just about everything. We're 100% in agreement that Eric, the SRO, is a resource that's effective and efficient to be a frontline person that's at the school to, to take charge and do something. And I think that's why we're here, is to, to ask, or to throw this out, is we want to make sure this becomes a full-time position at the school, possibly at the next budget, if you guys can manage that in your, in your next fiscal year. We hope that you will consider that, because he needs to be up there every day. When he's not there, sometimes things do get missed, and they may wait to have him check into it. And if he takes a Friday and a Monday off, or, and it could be five days before he even gets to something. And he, he has said that he, he loses a little bit of touch of what's happening around the school, and it takes him a little bit to get caught back up. But if he's up there five days a week, nothing's gonna get by him.
Okay. Does anybody, does anybody have any questions? Don, do you have something you want to add? Oh, excuse me.
It's tough to go last, so there's not a lot to add. But I will say that I personally fully support the SRO. I do hope the school committee sees fit to, to try to pursue funding and make it a full-time position. I know when we first implemented this, there was a, a very small percentage of people who were opposed to it. I think it's really proved its worth. All the feedback that I've gotten from both the police officers, the chief, and the administration has, has been nothing short of very positive. When I speak with Eric, if, we used to have two SROs. We had Eric Kukos, and we also had Sandra Lawton. Sandra left in June to go to another police department, unfortunately. So now Eric is the SRO, and we are working on having a backup SRO as well. Eric does not work a predictable schedule, because we don't want to fall into the routine that he's there every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, for example, so that maybe things could happen on Tuesday and Thursday. So we try to mix it up like that. But when I speak with him, he is so excited about being the SRO. He loves the job. And we realize that not every officer is cut out to be an SRO, just like everyone, you know, different people have different skills. So the department did put out a request for interest, and officers that were interested in the position came forward. They were evaluated. And, and the, and Chief Alfano at the time, and Lieutenant Nelson at the time, you know, selected who they thought were the prime candidates. And again, I think it's worked extremely well. Eric doesn't work with a heavy hand, but when it's time to step in, Eric will step in, and he has a very good sense for it, when it's time to let things run their course, and when it's time to call a timeout. So I, I know the Board of Selectmen support the SRO as well, and I do hope that it, that it's a consideration for the school committee to, to pursue it as a full-time option.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have questions or guests? Kathy?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Perry, and thank you for the presentation. I think it's a wonderful program, and I know that a lot of high schools have SROs, and I think moving to a full-time position, I think would be great. I'm also on the Space Committee Needs Task Force, and we're starting to identify what the needs are for the, for the high school. And one of the critical needs has to do with the functioning of the security cameras around the school. And in conjunction with that, and, and forgive me, I don't know where I heard it, I, I want to put it out there for your reaction, but that the, the security cameras work in conjunction with a laptop, I guess, that the SRO has? Is that not, how does it work? And what is the relationship between the security cameras and the work that the SRO?
Yeah, so the security cameras are tied into an internal network system, and so that's viewable on, in the front office, we have two video screens that are there where the two secretaries are able to see what's happening live on the cameras. And then the administrators in the building, myself, and the two assistant principals, we have software that allows us to see the video cameras. It's not, people elsewhere in the building can't see what's on the video cameras. And the video records, so it goes to a server, so it records. So if we need to go back and pull tape, we can do that. We don't ask Officer Kukos to just monitor the security tape. If we believe that there's something that we need to see, we go back and we look at it. If we think that he should be involved in it, then we have him see it. But he would not be actively monitoring the video cameras in the school.
Okay, thank you.
Administrators are the ones, and other staff don't have access to those video cameras. We are the ones who monitor the video cameras, if, if we need to go back and search for something.
The other question I had was about communication. I know a lot of the buildings, and not just here, but in other school districts, that the term that people like to use is vulgar. Like if you want to use your cellphone, you have to walk the parking lot to get good reception. And there was a concern about the ability for the SRO to communicate directly with the police department, and if the, that the SRO has all the equipment that he needs to function optimally as the SRO. And if not, what can the school committee do to make sure that that...
Well, does, do, do, why don't, can we have the chief speak to, do you have what you need? Does Officer Kukos have what he needs?
No, the radios don't work within the building. It's like the cellphone.
The radios don't work in the building?
They're limited. They, they've gotta push outside of the building. They've gotta get outside the school walls to hit the repeater. And right now, if you're in the school, we all know, the radios just don't hit the repeater, so responding units know what's going on.
So if the radios don't work in the building, and he's in the building, and he needs something, how does he get his message?
He'll, he'll use the school radio and talk to the front. And they'll, they'll communicate to us.
Officer Kukos carries a school radio as well, and so he's in communication with the administrators in the building at all times. So if one of us believes that we need to call 911, we call the front office and say, "We need 911 call." Officer Kukos can do the same thing. Now, so he has his police radio as well. In the cafeteria, you're able to hear, but as you get in different parts of the building, it is, it's more challenging for him to be able to communicate externally. But we can communicate internally, but that makes sense.
So, does anybody want to ask a question before I continue, Neil?
I have a couple, actually, on that. I, I'll talk about the radio question that's leading off yours. But I'd also like to know what the SRO does during the day, with the norm, I understand what the process is and so forth, excuse me, but what the actual, the SRO actually does. But first, on the, the communication thing, so if there's an emergency, because I know this has been a, a bit of a headline year that we've had, right, with some potentially serious threats that have taken place. We've had some assaults, we've had some arrests. And if, if the officer needs help in a situation, and he's unable to reach someone at the office, or he's not able to pick up the phone and dial 911 himself, what I understand the chief is saying is that there is no option. He has to handle this. He's on his own.
That is correct. Yes, he'd have to figure out what to do, and how to communicate to the next level to get to us.
So, does the technology exist, chief, for, for...
There's all kinds of technology, depending on what you want to pay for. You could have a booster, almost like a, when we had the Sprint Next Health. You have like a booster that will send a signal out. It may be a repeater, it may be a booster. We'd, we'd have to go to the radio companies and ask for a consultant to figure out what we need to push his portable radio outside the building to our antenna.
Okay, thank you. And so what does the SRO actually do during the day? I mean, is he walking, walking a beat in the school?
No, not watching.
So the answer is partially yes. I mean, he spends a lot of time on his feet. He should get a pedometer. So throughout the day, he's in the halls, checking on students, interacting with students. He's in a fair number of meetings with us. He's handling paperwork at times as well. If we have a disciplinary situation that we think could potentially involve him, we usually brief him. He might provide us some advice on the situation. He's gonna be doing, he doesn't do a ton of presentations in classrooms, but does some. So he's gonna be doing a presentation to all of the ninth graders, I think, in a couple weeks on internet and social media safety. But the majority of his time, he is out in the building and interacting with kids for the hour and a half, hour and 45 minutes of lunch each day. He's in the cafeteria with us.
Thanks.
And he's running around the building outside, too. He's checking the parking lots. Lets the buses out when they are heading home, and also runs down to Mechanics Street to get those buses out.
Mark and Lynn, do you have any questions?
Yeah, yeah. So he's, he's checking things, too, so to make sure the doors are locked.
Kathy, Kathy? So, so we have an SRO. You folks would like to see him full-time.
Great.
That would be great, you say. But we have an SRO who's got a radio that doesn't work optimally in the building, and you think that we could... That would be great, you say. But we have an SRO who's got a radio that doesn't work optimally in the building. And you think that we could resolve that with a repeater or a booster?
That is possible.
I have no idea what that costs.
We certainly could get you our radio company to contact. Obviously have him come down.
But, but if you've had an SRO in the building and the equipment isn't optimal when he's in there, did you know about that? Have you let anybody know?
Well, that's, that's been an ongoing thing that's been going on for years.
What do you mean?
Anytime we go for a medical, we get down there and we have to go into the nurse's office. Our portals just don't work.
But did the adminis, did, I mean, did Dr. Graham know, did you?
There's been conversation about trying to get some sort of repeater for a while. I mean, I can tell you that we have not had an instance.
We have not had an instance where, in which that was a problem in the two-plus years that we've had the SRO in place. Would it be good to have? Absolutely, but we have not had any sort of a crisis situation in which the SRO was present and needed to contact people outside and wasn't able to do so.
Not on wood for that, right?
Thank you very much, yes.
Right, okay. So, so again, is?
I'd just like to add to that. I mean, we, we are obviously there for the safety of the kids and create a safe environment. I'm also concerned about the safety of our officers. And I feel that we need to improve the environment to ensure the safety of our officers. So they can in turn ensure the safety of the children. So I feel very strongly, we need better equipment.
You know, I'm sorry. Let me just take a little bird walk here. I just, I have this image, one day I had to put my grandson on the bus to go to school. And I put him on the bus, his first one on the bus. And it struck me that when I put my kids on the bus, I did it without thinking. When I put this kid on the bus, it occurred to me that when I, I trust that when I put him on the bus to go to school, he's going to be safe. Thank God, nothing has happened. If this is a simple fix, if money will solve a problem, how much do we need? Let's do it, why, why are we waiting?
I don't know, I don't know why we're at this point. Have you ever raised the, have you ever let us know that you needed this? Has anyone ever let us know?
I don't think this is a problem that hasn't been out there. I don't know who's made notification, I can't answer that question.
Whatever.
Okay, so, I guess we need to know. So we need to know what they need.
Task, task force was talking about what?
The security cameras, the functioning of the security cameras are on the list of things for the building needs. And we've identified it as a critical need. Because I don't know if they're, I don't know if they're currently functioning as they should, or are they, or we need more? Or what, could you speak to that Perry, please?
So we did have a period of time last year when we had glitches in the security cameras. Not a lot of our security cameras were working. We were able to get them back up and working. All the security cameras in the building work right now. There's still some areas in the building that we've identified where we'd like to add security cameras. We have a pretty comprehensive security camera system in the building. But yes, there are other places in the building where I would like to add more cameras. And that's something that we've worked on with facilities, so we have identified areas and that's in the budget to add.
It is in the budget?
Correct.
For more cameras?
Correct.
Okay, so I still want to understand what the police, who are the ones doing the job, feel that they need to optimally do their job to ensure the safety of the staff and the students in the school.
With cameras, is it, are we still on this point for surveillance cameras?
You believe we need more surveillance cameras?
Definitely, that needs to be improved. The system is probably definitely needs to be updated. There are multiple cameras that are just outdated and need to be improved. Quantity definitely need to be increased. Without going into areas, we don't really want to say where and how many. But it has to, and that's going to help on both ends. Where it'll help us prove something happened, and it'll help us prove something didn't happen. We just had the case the other day, it was clear, the SRO checked into something. And it proved something happened, but it wasn't as bad as what it was reporting to us.
Well, that's protecting too, right?
And if, it does help us solve crimes, or at least gives us leads to get to a point that we can solve this crime.
And just to circle back to the previous question, I don't want the committee to think that the police department has never raised a concern about, about, from what I'll call them, the dead spots or the poor communication spots in the building as far as the radios go. When I first became aware of this, I was in a discussion with Chief Alfano, who's now retired. And I said, well, why haven't you elevated this? And he said, I have spoken with the administration, and the administration has told me that there are budget issues, that we don't have funds for that. So it was noted as a concern, but there was no money to be appropriated.
That never came through. Okay, go ahead. Lynn?
So I was just wondering, Perry, are you coordinating with the chief when you develop the budget for the security cameras that are in the budget for now? You said that the cameras in the budget now, so when you developed that budget, did you coordinate with the chief at all?
So I coordinated with the SRO in terms of identifying areas in the building where we would need additional cameras. And then coordinate with facilities about areas in the building where we would need additional cameras. So I don't, I don't ask for like a budget number because that's something that's, that we would do with facilities. But as far as identifying where else would we need additional cameras, yes, that's something that I probably did have a conversation with Chief Alfano. But really, that's a conversation with the SRO because the SRO knows the building far better than the chief would know the building. So definitely had conversations with the school resource officer about where in the building we would want additional cameras. But as far as like, you know, how much would that cost, that's really a conversation with facilities.
No, just what you need, what's required.
Alright, so, go ahead. All set? Neil?
So when is that, when is that, are those cameras going in?
So, Chief, you had said updated stuff. Are you talking about the entire infrastructure, or are you talking about cameras themselves that need to be updated?
The cameras themselves.
Okay.
It's like a computer, in a couple of years, there's a newer model that does a little bit better. And that'll improve.
I think this year, with, earlier, there was something that was in the paper about a knapsack being stolen or something like that. And the sun was shining at the wrong time, and the camera wasn't necessarily doing the right thing. So they weren't able to recognize the person. And then I think we also had, if I recall correctly in the paper again, there was a break-in at the high school in vandalism last May. And again, security camera captured images, but not necessarily images that the camera was able to decipher. I mean, so that's because the cameras are older, or?
Yes, I think it's still an older system. And I think that went in when the building was renovated or.
No, it went in about eight or nine years ago. It went in right after.
The same cameras, George?
The camera systems were all new when we put the, when we locked the doors and put the camera systems in after the Pennsylvania school shootings. That's when we did it, and we put, that's when we locked all the doors of the schools and put the cameras in the high school at that time. So it was about 2007, I would say.
We have some cameras that are newer and provide clearer images. I mean, I don't want to suggest that the cameras don't provide, you know, that they provide like really bad grainy images. We're able to get relatively good images off of either the older cameras as well. But we do have some newer cameras in the building that have higher quality images. And to point out, having cameras also, like, isn't, no camera system is going to be a perfect system as well. Because you've got a lot of kids in a relatively small space, like going back, I know the incident that you're referring to with a backpack. And there was, there was a problem with light shining through the window, and so it was hard to see on the camera. But it's also part of the issue was, you've got a lot of kids in a small space. So having a camera doesn't make things perfect. It's very good, and in particular, we were able to, there was this recent issue that having had the cameras was absolutely huge. But we do, so newer cameras are, give us better images than the older cameras do. But the older cameras do give us decent quality images. But I would agree, you know, again, if it could, you know, if upgrades are possible, of course, I'm going to want to have upgrades.
So in that case, if we have the cameras and they're capturing images and the images aren't being properly photographed or whatnot. I mean, what do we do with it at that point? I mean, right now, there's all kinds of imaging software. I know state police has a computer forensics lab, for instance, that, you know, you can actually submit. You know, banks, they, somebody robs a 7-Eleven, they get an older camera. And they can really do a great job at clarifying some of these images that can't be seen. And, I mean, is that a process that we, I mean, it just seems like a really labor-intensive process rather than just switching out the camera or something like that?
You're asking me somewhat technical questions, I don't know the answers to, did you want to?
There are software that will improve the quality of the picture. And we do, the state police probably are not going to look at every knapsack that's picked up and taken. Nessman does a lot of that. If there is something that is on an image, they may be able to improve the picture to make it look a little bit.
So, for instance, in the vandalism then, if it's not a knapsack, is that something that went to Nessman to look at? At that, I mean, did we pursue it to that level?
It could be, but I, I don't think that would go into Nessman or anything like that.
Okay.
Okay. One more comment, yeah?
Okay, no, I think I would want to know how much it would cost to equip the SRO with the radio or whatever. He needs to be able to contact the police directly. And it seems to me that, I just heard that in 2007 after a school shooting incident, that it prompted the school system to set up locked doors and cameras and everything like that. I guess I'm confused as to why when we see a need, a safety need, for, that involves keeping our children safe and keeping a police officer safe, why we wouldn't apply that level of urgency here? It's luck that nothing has happened.
It's definitely a good point, because if something does happen, the current setup when they go into lockdown, people are monitoring the cameras, and they're watching and seeing what's going on. And that's great for us, because that tells us where we need to go. If they can communicate with Eric, which they'll do with the interior radio, we got to find a way to get that information back to us. And I think that's why in the new law, there's something about, there's supposed to be a radio, a police radio that the school system is supposed to buy. They have, it's either one or two, but I know you're supposed to have that. And that's just another tool that's going to be able to, if it's, if it's in that room that they're watching, they could be communicating to us too. So that, that you may have to put on your list of things.
How much are you talking about?
All radios could be, a good radio, a couple of thousand dollars.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we have Michael and George work with you folks? And then quickly, to identify what is it that you need to do your job optimally and ensure the safety of everyone? And then let us know. Because this is, if we do something now, which sounds like we need to take care of, whatever it is, but we need to know what it is, that's going to impact this year's budget. So, not that that's an issue, I just want to know what it is and if we can kind of expedite it, like, immediately.
I think Eric mentioned, he does need some sort of a laptop. And I'm not sure if that's to communicate or just to see what's going on, answer emails. But it may just get tied into the security system. Nowadays, with your iPhones, you can get into your home security system and see what's going on.
Well, if it's for the security system, if he's doing his emails, he can bring his own laptop. If it's for the security system, yeah.
He's probably using his own iPhone. You know, if we can get some more tools for him, that will help. And we certainly can, as we're trying to figure things out for a few more items.
Alright, so why don't we hook you guys up as soon as possible, like tomorrow, figure out what it is and let us know, and that's great. Wow, okay, well, thank you.
And if you guys could also report on the status of the radios and stuff that you've already bought, when those are going in? The status of the radios that are in the budget now, when those, not the radios, the cameras, when they're going in?
Okay. I don't have a date for it.
No, that's, I know you don't, but you can probably report out at the same time.
Okay, thank you gentlemen, appreciate it. Alright, we need a time check because we went way over on two things. But I wanted to know, Michael, what do you need?
I think the most pressing would be the mower contract and the FY-15 expenditures.
So why don't we jump to that? Get yours, get your stuff in there.
Okay. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
So for FY-15 expenditures, we have two high school bills that were missed last year. They're both, they have a memo explaining what they are. When a bill from a previous fiscal year was missed and the year is closed out, it requires a vote of the governing body, which is in this case, the school committee, to approve payment of those bills from the current fiscal year fund. So the motion would be to approve those two bills, those two FY-15 bills with payment with FY-16 funds.
Can I make the motion?
Yep.
I move to pay the two bills listed on the agenda for FY-15 expenditures, as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Just to clarify that, I think it was covered, there are two memos, one has two bills and one has three bills.
So what's total, before we continue on?
I'm sorry. It is a hundred and twenty dollar reimbursement and a three hundred and fifty dollar charge to Niasse having, that's on the October fourteenth memo, okay? There's two memos, there are three, there are three bills that were oversited. So the first one?
Thousand twenty-two. Okay, you want to try that again?
I make the motion to approve the three bills and the two memos for the FY-15 expenditures.
Thank you.
Second.
Neil? Second. Any questions? All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, George?
Second one is a mower contract, it was approved in the budget this past year. There was proposal FY-16, we're trading in the mower we currently have now and buying two mowers, ride-on log mowers with baggers and mulch kits to be used on our school grounds. Total purchase price of the mowers is $27,000. We had $8,500 loan trade-in. So we went to Clinton Savings Bank for the purposes of entering into a 36-month loan agreement for $18,000. That is the most money that was in the budget this year. So we're asking the fellow school committee to enter into this contract.
Questions?
Was this already approved on the budget?
The funding to pay the lease was approved in the budget. I'm asking the school committee to approve the actual contract.
What was the lease for?
Just to finance it over three years, we're not paying for it fall this year.
So it's already been approved?
Not the lease, it's a loan, I'm sorry.
So the loan was already approved?
No, the funding in order to pay the loan is in the FY-16 budget, the first year of payments of funding. But what I'm asking, since we're entering into a contract, I'm asking approval of the school committee to authorize us to enter into the contract.
Is it important that we do this now? Why, why do we need to do this now?
In order to get to buy the lawnmowers, so they're ready to go in the spring.
And what's, where are the ones we currently have?
We only have one, and I assume it's still at the high school.
So why do we need two?
Because, do you want to just explain what we're doing?
Yeah, I just don't know, just.
So the single, we have two ground staff that split their time amongst the district. This is going to allow them to break out, take two mowers. It's a more efficient mower, a quicker mower that moves on the ground, it's a little smaller, so they can be more mobile between the district. It also gives them some options to bag grass, which, you know, collects the clippings so we don't have dead grass all over the field, as well as striping fields and give us a better playing surface. And right now, we're working with the trade-in law, which that's beneficial to us. We're trying to negotiate something, that's why we're trying to do it now. I don't know in the spring if that will still be there.
So, you know, I saw the email exchange between you and Lynn, lots of questions. The only question I had is, are the people, what's the status of the people who are doing the work?
They are the custodial staff dedicated to the grounds and maintenance position.
Alright guys, what do you think? Any questions about this? Are we ready to vote? I kind of feel like I need a little more, but.
I have a simple question, the annual amount on the loan, how does that compare to our current budget for the line?
We have, we have another lease we pay out of that line, correct? What, how is this, how does this, the cost of this loan, how does it compare to what we currently? What, how is this, how does this, the lead, the cost of this loan, how does it compare to what we currently budget for in your budget?
How does it pay?
No, no, how, I, it's never exact, obviously. The payment schedule on this loan, how does that compare to the money available in the budget? How much in your budget line do you have for this amount?
Budget line item for this amount is six thousand dollars that was carried for this year. At this rate of four point two five zero per year, it comes into like five hundred and sixty-five dollars, which comes up for the year to above six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So we see that line at about seven hundred.
But for this year at most, we're not doing the full year. So we have, so, so this year we probably have about six payments?
Correct.
So we, so it's going to be under our remote carry.
Thank you.
Kathy, you have a question?
No, I, I have, well, I, it's a lot to digest. Is there, do we have to approve that tonight? Can we wait till the next meeting?
We can wait till the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, thanks, George. Okay, superintendent search is on the agenda. Okay. So the, the, we have started looking into search possibilities. The typical superintendent search is a three to six month process. And I want to clarify something that was said earlier. And while we have been extremely fortunate to have the same superintendent consistently with us for the length of time that we have, it is not usual and it is not the norm. And it doesn't mean that when a district changes superintendents every three to five years, which is the norm, that that is a detrimental thing to the district. In fact, I think in one of the letters I saw, it said something about, it mentioned Groton and a few other towns in our area, Berlin and Harvard, who had gone through three, four, five superintendents in the same period. But, but those numbers weren't really telling the whole story because I do know that Harvard and Groton are pretty good districts. They've had three, four, five superintendents. And I'm not taking anything away from Michael. My point is, you've got to do the homework. So when we spoke with MASC, when we spoke with MASC, what they told us was that this is a good time to start a search because many superintendents are looking for other opportunities and many districts are looking for superintendents to begin on July first. And with contracts typically coming up at the end of December, this is the time to do it. So with regards to that, while it is the school committee's responsibility to actually do the hiring of the superintendent, the search process that we would like to undertake actually will include members of the community. There would be a search committee bill. It would be made up of school representatives, administration, teachers, residents, parents, town officials. And I think in, in order to do this the right way, we really need a search partner. And there are several. So I know that the MASC does it, MASC has worked with us on some other things. But they could be One Resource, New England School Development Council, NESDEC also does it, and there are private firms. We're not in a crisis situation like we were last time when Michael came and saved us. We are not there. So I think that we do have an opportunity to be thoughtful, to be inclusive, and to take the time that we need. If we find that we need more time, then we do have the opportunity to look at an interim superintendent. And that's someone who is a career superintendent, has a lot of success, has done this for a long time. And we would be able to talk with the MASC because they would be the resource to help us there and find someone that would fit the bill while we take our time and look for a permanent superintendent. So at this point, I don't know, does anyone on the committee have any questions about that? But according to folks at the MASC who have given us a little bit of information, this is the time to start. Any questions?
So we would contract like with a recruiting firm?
Right.
And they would act as a recruiting?
Well, they would coordinate, they would work with us to coordinate getting the ad together, pulling, helping us identify the number of people that we would want on the search committee, vetting the candidates before they bring them to the search committee, and then helping us through every step of the process. The cost on it, I thought it was going to be crazy, but it, it's ten thousand dollars at the lower end, up to twenty-five. So we need to start looking into it. I'm not saying we're, you know, we're going to spend that money right now, I'm saying we need to start, start now.
So who vets the people who do the vetting?
So what I'd like to do is ask you folks to allow the personnel subcommittee to start working on that.
So your process then with the personnel subcommittee would vet these organizations?
So, so-
And then make a recommendation to the school committee?
Right.
And then we would approve that particular company or whatever?
And from there, a search committee made up of all of the stakeholders that you mentioned
would, would then work with the-
Yes.
Search firm?
Right. How's it sound?
That sounds-
I don't think we can do this on our own. We can't.
Well, we're not going to approve any monies though until the personnel committee comes to us with any recommendations.
With the recommendations.
And then, and then we can decide if we're going to-
Right, so what we need is, I really would like you folks to allow the personnel subcommittee to formally begin the process of vetting search partners. Right?
Right.
So vet, vet the search partners, we know of a few. And then bring a recommendation to the committee once you've vetted the search partners. And then help guide the committee through the search.
Okay, but we're not, and we're not approving any contract with anybody right now?
No, no, you're starting the process. You're doing the research to identify the different resources that are out there, vetting them, making a recommendation. This is the search firm I think we should use, this is why. Any questions on that?
You looking for a motion for something?
I am looking for a motion.
I move- Go ahead.
Please, go ahead.
I move that we delegate to the personnel committee initial exploration of potential firms that could help us to recruit a permanent and interim superintendent. And report back as the progress as they go.
To the school.
To the school committee.
Okay. Does that work? Yes. Do you have a second?
Second.
Neil, second? Does everybody understand what we just talked about? Yeah? Okay. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay. Policies, what time is it? Time check.
It's eight twenty-eight.
We can skip the policies. I'm, I'm sorry, can I speak for the policy subcommittee right now?
You can.
That we can move these policies to the next agenda?
For Ann, I think my spot may be less than the allotted time as well.
Oh, well then let's just go because I- Did anybody have questions on the policies? That are in the packet?
I don't, I don't want to, but there was a question asked earlier. I think it was that it was going to be discussed during the discussion of superintendent search about where the funding comes from, it's at ten thousand dollars up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Or potentially, I know that's not approved, potentially-
So you know what we'll do? We'll get that information through the personnel committee. And then when they bring that back to the school committee, we'll, we'll know more about it. So we'll, we'll get back on that. But I'm not going to take any more questions in the middle of the meeting, Julie.
Okay, but, but you didn't answer any of that one question at the appropriate time, that's the problem.
No.
I don't think we know the answer.
I don't think we have an answer right now.
This is a meeting.
This is initial information. This is the middle of a meeting, okay, we're going to not do this. And you, you were a school committee member up until June, so you know that. So we're going to keep moving through the agenda. And if you don't stop, you will be out of order, don't do that. I don't want to do that. Okay, so we're going to continue with the policies? Nicole?
So the new policies coming before the committee today, the ADA district goals and objectives basically states that the district has to have goals.
I thought they looked good.
Do you really?
I do, I thought the policies were really well-written.
The policy subcommittee and I have a issue, well, no, against each other. They, they, they really like it.
What? It's a friendly feud.
I'll let them talk about it. To talk about why you like this particular policy.
Okay, I think that, I think the goals ought to, ought to reflect, ought to be broad overarching goals. And that the other goals that are objected, uh, objected, that are developed for the schools, the school committee, et cetera, should link back to these goals and objectives. And I think if you look at what has been added to the, the policy, you can see, I mean, you can get the gist of what it is. Now, this policy hadn't been looked at since April twenty-sixth of two thousand and one. And a lot has transpired in education and in school leadership, et cetera, since two thousand and one. It's like, like, to me, it's like three generations of stuff. So I think what has been added reflects the direction that we're going in. I hate to use the term, but it's a, it's a, it's a good shorthand term. The twenty-first century skills that we're infusing into the curriculum and a lot of the presentations that we're seeing from our students and teachers reflect this, this attitude towards learning and the types of skills that we want the kids to have. So the goals are that students develop proficiency in academic skills. Will learn and use collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and courage to act, scope, and succeed in a dynamic society. Students will learn how to develop, nurture, and maintain meaningful interpersonal relationships. And allocations of resources, human time and financial, are aligned for maximum efficiency and efficacy. And those are in line with their, their good summary of what have, what has come to be known as twenty-first century skills.
So, so where-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry, where does the disconnect then between?
I, I am happy with the first two paragraphs and what was added and the wordsmithing that we did. And I think we did some great work there. The bullets, I think we are setting, we're setting goals for the district. And these are great, obviously, yes, we want all of these things. We want all of these things.
But we have to say we want them.
We say it as, as a committee when it comes time to set our goals. Well, I, I, you know, I'm going to use my word again. I love broad policy. And I think putting, putting actual goals in our policy, I think, is out of place. And I think hogties future committee members. These are, and, and I'm not saying that I don't want a student to be proficient in his academic skills.
Yeah, they sound kind of broad-based to me, but Lynn, what did you want to add to Nicole's?
She might be right. What'd you say? Oh my god.
All right. Neil, you're on policy, what do you got?
I'm all in favor for aligning with twenty-first century learning initiative. I think these goals are fairly broad that are listed there. But it defines an attempt, and if we're revising policy, as we should be in the school committee, this is going to get revisited three years, maybe five years from now. And by then, if the initiative's changed, obviously, that's something that would change. And it's an organic, to me, this is an organic policy that develops as, you know, the district goals, initiatives, and so forth change.
I, 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 I think they're broad enough.
I don't know, especially that third bullet, that's the one that gets me the most.
Okay, well then we're moving somewhere, that's good, so students will do-
But it is-
But don't they do that in the classrooms? I mean, Michael, students will learn how to develop, nurture, and maintain meaningful interpersonal relationships? I mean, they do that anyway.
Right, I mean, that's part of our social emotional curriculum.
But Michael does, what, Nicole's argument, is it valid?
It's not so much it's valid, I totally think it's valid.
I think she was asking Mike.
Oh, all right.
Sorry.
Sorry, I didn't-
Well, it's her point of view, so it is valid. I, I would just, I think, and maybe there's some wordsmithing that to be clear, these themselves are not the goals. These are the overarching thinking that the goals should be written to address. And, and so maybe there needs to be a better introductory phrase or, or sentence that needs to make sure that people understand that. I mean, that was the intent.
I, I understand, and I, you know, I-
So I, I agree with Michael and Nicole. I think that the first two paragraphs might be best and then leave the goals off because the intent of the policy is to state, I think, you're having mission and goals, not what all of them are, is it?
Well, I think that if it's district goals, you should articulate what your, what standard you have for the creation of goals. So I essentially, and, and that introduction to the bulleted list maybe needs to be reworded. But the, what we're saying is, goals that, that we have, that school buildings have, that teachers have, et cetera, should fall under these broad categories.
So they're not the goals?
So they're more like standards for goals.
Yeah.
But not the goals.
Not the goals.
It's, it's how we should be framing the goals.
Yes, yeah.
Well, maybe that needs to, because maybe that's, that, that introductory, and I think Michael mentioned that too, your goals and objectives will be written to ensure, which is pretty-
You want to send it back?
Definitive.
To policy.
I want to send it back to-
All right, send it back to policy. Okay.
I have a comment before it goes back.
Oh, before it goes back.
So the word tenant needs to be spelled properly. And maybe you might want to replace it with something like ideals or ideas or something like that.
Something that most people-
You're the only one who's word processor.
That was good, that's unusual for me, for you. You want to do the next one?
And then the committing funds policy, which I think was built from whole cloth, is that correct, Neil?
No.
No?
No. This was modeled after a couple other districts.
This is a new one, because it's, yeah, this is a new one.
It's a new one for us, we're not revising any policy, but it's based on like-kind policy in like-kind districts. And it deals with specifically, as Michael pointed out, in the past, it deals with the leasing and/or acquisition of materials, supplies, or equipment extended beyond a fiscal year, a single fiscal year. And what that does, it allows us on the school committee to be notified if there's anything that goes into multi-year leasing or whatnot so that we can project that out for future budgets. And in creating a budget book, we'll be able to speak to, this will be an ongoing concern for X number of years down the line. So it's, it's nothing that impedes, it's just a reporting process that helps for the budget formulation.
All right, any other questions on this one? This is a brand-new policy.
I feel like it's a very churchet policy.
I can't, I'm sorry, Mark, I couldn't hear you, say again?
I feel like, I feel like it's a lot of boilerplate. It might be possible to express the idea in a little, little more clearly and easily understood manner.
When did you turn into a wordsmith? That's awesome.
I, I may have, I may have some suggestions, but I feel like this is just not much fun to read and therefore not much fun to follow either.
Okay, I'm not sure how many people sit around reading our policies on a Friday night, but, okay. But if you have suggestions on changes you want to make, can you provide that?
Yes.
Back to policy?
Pardon?
This one's going back to policy?
Yeah, this one's gonna go back to policy.
Well, this is the first reading anyway, so.
And if we can find out a way of making this more entertaining to read, it might help people in the future too, so, yeah.
All right.
All right, and then if we go down to, um, second readings, these are the ones that we could vote on tonight if we so choose. We took back students' rights from the last time we, um, discussed it. To wordsmith it again, so it could be more applicable to all grades within the district.
So I see what you did here, you changed, you took this bullet out.
Yeah.
Act to prevent personal injury. Okay. Any questions on this?
Yes, Mark, how does this stand grammatically?
And what's the fun factor?
I'm fine with it.
The fun factor, that's a good one, yep.
Anybody else's questions on this one? Oh my gosh, you have one.
Yeah, hold on a second, let's just, let's just, maybe we might be able to do both at the same time. And then the administrative councils, cabinets, and committees, which went through a lot of revision.
Worked on this one?
We all did.
So what, what really changed, I mean, and we could all read it, but if you can boil it down for people who haven't read it, what changed?
Not really a lot changed, some and ors were, you know.
You got a bunch of paragraphs then.
Taken off. Um, you know, making it clear that the establishing policy remains with the school committee while implementing policy remains with the superintendent.
So I have a question for the superintendent.
Mm-hmm.
How many various flavors of councils and advisory bodies are in existence at the moment?
Six for seven?
Just a few.
Yeah.
Not so many. And do you have any feeling that might be burdensome or a little bit, um, superfluous to report as often as quarterly on these bodies that are really here to advise you? Do you have much point of view about?
I don't think it's bur-, I don't think it's burdensome, I, I think the, um, again, the question becomes, in terms of roles and responsibilities, you know, you, you want your meeting time to be useful to you, to what you do, and making sure that if, you know, these report outs are occurring, how to make them useful to you. And that's something you'll have to explore how to do. Is that, that's not typically how it's done.
And Mark, just, because we talked about that very thing, and, um, what we're doing is we're changing the superintendent shall report, instead of it reading periodically to school committee on the activities of these groups, what we just did was periodically is-
Right, very, right.
Extremely. So we just said on the activity of this group, and threw it in as once per quarter or agreed upon by the school committee. So if it's semi-annually or whatever, I mean, but it, it defines something rather than it being so vague.
So was all the red added?
Yeah.
I just feel like this is opposite of kind of the stance we were on the last policy. This is adding a lot.
This was all taken out too.
Yeah, but was that originally there or not?
It was changed out.
Was that originally there, or was that from the first reading?
It was originally-
That was originally there? Okay, if that was originally there, then never mind.
So, any questions, how do people feel about this one? Issues, concerns? Nope? I think you're-
Well, we just need a motion for those two.
So, so we need a motion for the-
J-I-N-C-E.
The J, oh, look at the J. For the student rights policy, J-I, policy J-I, and the administrative councils, cabinets, and committees.
Separately or together? Do you want to do them together?
We could do them together.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Okay, I move we vote to approve the students' right policy, J-I, and administrative councils, cabinets, and committees policy, C-E.
And is there a second?
Second.
Neil seconded, and any questions, comments? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Okay, we're moving along now. We're gonna, we're gonna walk into the subcommittee reports right now, and I really want to hear from Mark Jones, I think you guys do too, so, what do you have, finance?
Um, let's see, I'll just mention in passing that I've signed the warrant and I approved it. We didn't manage to discuss it in our recent meeting. I just wanna mention that when I sent out my report and memorandum on preliminary estimated revenue for the district, I received a couple of questions from the school committee as well as from the public that made it clear that it would be helpful to be a little slightly more comprehensive, but substantially the same. So, um, I discussed this with, uh, our two finance committee members, the modification, and they were agreeable to it. So I wanted to put it in the school committee's hands to look at. Um, the main emphasis change is instead of talking almost entirely about the change in revenue between last year and the forthcoming, well, this year and the projected year in the future, um, is to really at least list the likely gross revenue that's at the moment preliminary guessed, preliminarily guessed at. And that's substantially the only change that was made in that memorandum. So, um, I do have a couple of paper copies, people want to take a look at them now, and if, if they are online as well, if people want to discuss it. This main, main attempt is just to make it slightly clearer and to aid people who are misled by the, um, brevity of the recent, the last version of that memorandum.
So, where are we at with your report outs?
Um, I had been, we have had a period where we haven't had all three of us in the same room, I think, since the last school meeting meeting.
But you, but two's a quorum.
So, right, we have had quorum, but I had some sentiment that it's desirable for all of us to talk about, um, among, among the various things that are in the queue. Personnel, um, and personnel benefits, as well as, um, basic, um, contracts for facilities as well as energy. Um, today we went over, oh, actually, also went over sped costs. And today we had a preliminary view of technology and, um, what was the other facilities? Facilities plans. So, we haven't really digested them and, um, in a way that we can, got something to report out that I think is useful to the committee as a whole. And so, I'm mindful that we're, it's desirable to have something in people's hands to be able to think about.
I think maybe at our next meeting, instead of taking a new topic on, we'll just do the summary.
That's a great idea.
Okay.
Because I think we could use that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, I think, in my view, the, the big, biggest thing to be able to talk about is personnel, since it's above sixty percent of our budget. And so if we can get a good handle on that, at least we'll have a, something to, to say that's significant to the whole committee to think about.
And then you and Kathy-
The key is to be-
Pardon?
The key is to also be set, so when the Trittown meeting comes up in December, that we have some, you know, valuable directional information with regard to the budget as is, you know, as the process is thrown out.
Well, I think, I think we've got what, we, but we, that, Trittown's one thing, but I think the committee has to understand what's going on.
Yeah.
So-
And I just want to remind everybody, be mindful that all of these things are very preliminary and subject to change and revision, and we're still waiting for the department heads to give their detailed responses to Michael Wood's memorandum request for detail. So we should not take any of these forthcoming comments from, um, from me as well, from George King's, um, you know, as fixed and stone, it's really just in process and subject to change.
So when is your next, um, your next subcommittee meeting?
Um, I know we're gonna have it before our next school committee meeting, but I hope that we can meet in between, the in-between week between then and now. We haven't set a date.
I'm gonna ask you for another meeting on Monday night, so you're gonna have it.
Maybe we can just do it before that?
So, other members willing, we'll figure out a date, dates, date or dates to move forward on this.
And you're not, you're not, you're not building a Rembrandt, right?
No.
You just want to give us a perspective-
We just want to be able to talk, rather than trying to get into the same room to-
Okay, so you don't have to create a masterpiece.
No.
And you don't have to recreate George King's job. Just give us a perspective on what's going on in those different areas so we have an understanding.
Right.
Okay, all right.
The other thing is too, um, we also, because ultimately what we're, what we're doing is we're kind of sort of designing in its weird way a budget book with regards to the flow chart and the segmentation and so forth. And, um, in light of that, at the, uh, at the mass conference, um, I was able to, uh, to make a connection with somebody where a lot of districts actually have budget books right now, which are sort of like layman's versions of, um, the budget. They explain where we've been, where we are, where we're going on various main budgetary topics. Um, and so that's kind of what we've been, I'm gonna use the word again, organically, it's a little growing here. But ASBO, um, which is the Association, Association of School Business Officers, uh, has a meritorious budget award pamphlet, which I sent out, um, to everybody for informational purposes, uh, that, that may be something that we want to have a conversation on-
But that's not something the school committee built, right?
No, but it's, if, with the finance subcommittee, it may be something that we have a conversation on for creating in the future that allows for even greater transparency.
Oh.
Because, I mean, we put the budget online, it's sixty-two pages of Excel spreadsheets, but it's not easy for everybody to read, and if we can simplify that, it just makes it easier.
So George?
Yes.
You do that already?
Well, I mean, our presentation in the past, I mean, I think we put a lot of, uh, you know, data out that addresses a lot of those things, but, um, certainly we can look at the possibilities of putting it out in a different format, and, you know, as Neil, I think, said, we'll grow it over the years. I mean, I know we're gonna have a full-fledged budget book this year, but, uh, you know, we, we certainly can look at presenting in different formats.
Yeah, I mean-
And to be clear, this is, it, it's a multi-year thing, it's not something that, you know, can get done right away.
Right.
But it's, it, it's potentially like a good framework.
Sounds like a great idea, and, and if, that's the standard, right?
But it's good to get feedback from everyone on that first.
That's the standard?
Um, well, it's, it's not necessarily the standard, the, the, if you read that section, there's various, various recommendations that they made from everything from budget creation, whether you're gonna start with a, a zero-budget working way up from there, or, I mean, so-
No, I mean the book itself.
It talks about all of these, and then how to put like a budget book together and, you know, what areas you're catering to.
But when we were at the conference, didn't they say that-
Yeah.
Everybody's got a book.
If y'all go through, it's a thirty-six-page thing or something, and it's an enjoyable read, it's a fun read, Mark.
So glad you're on the finance subcommittee, but, okay, sounds good. Um, anything else for finance?
That's all that I have.
Kathy?
No.
Oh, good.
Um, I heard you did an awesome job with the Lancaster FinCon group. And maybe at the next, um, Trittown meeting, you could do that same presentation discussion with, um, the folks at Trittown. So, thanks. Um, okay, personnel.
Okay, we met on November ninth and on November sixteenth. Um, at the November ninth meeting, we had asked Michael for information evaluating personnel needs to support student learning, so what are the areas, um, that he would recommend we, um, enhance, add to? One of the things that came out of the NEAS report was had to do with the, um, uh, the need to reformat, and Michael, if I'm misspeaking, just correct me please, that you would give the, um, chairs at the high school more, um, I guess supervisory responsibility, department heads, I call them chairs, because, never mind. Um, and so they would teach, point two FTE less, and those, that would have to be backfilled. So the estimated cost to make this change would be about ninety-six thousand dollars. Um, high school would need an additional point two, this is all preliminary too, but this is, we're trying to, um, you know, um, try to get in front of the need and the information. Um, point two FTE for the alternative special education teacher, she's currently point eight. Um, another sped teacher at the high school, additional staffing needs in math because of certain class sizes, point four, point six FTE. Um, and the staffing needs are program-driven and not driven by student enrollment, with the exception of math. At the middle school, I think they're only looking for a part-time math specialist for Hail, and these are, that's a position that has been added to other schools. And in the elementary schools at Center and Mary Rollinson, um, because of enrollment, uh, one point zero FTE at each school. Um, FTE meaning, Mark, full-time equivalent. Um, maybe a need for additional paraprofessionals at each of the schools, but that's need is still, uh, being assessed. And, um, just a, a quick peek at the work that the finance committee has been doing, and I know it's still too, too soon to, to know definitively, but if we are anticipating, um, a shortfall in revenues, it behooves us to look at areas where we might look for efficiencies and perhaps efficiencies in staffing. And then on the sixteenth, um, we had a presentation, an introduction to collective bargaining that Monica Visco, um, the HR director, um, shared with us. We will be, the teacher contract is up, um, at the end of the school year two thousand and seventeen, so we will be starting, should be starting a process in December of two thousand and sixteen, so about a year from now. No one on this committee has been involved in collective bargaining, so, um, she will be doing, um, with us at some point, an overview and, um, had some really good ideas about working together with the teachers', um, association, and we had also talked about getting some training from MASC. And also at that meeting, we talked about potential staffing efficiencies that I don't want to share, but we did talk about them.
Well, no, because they weren't even-
Yeah, no, they're, they're, um, they're not, it was just for the purpose of our conversation based on Michael's preliminary analysis.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Nicole, policy?
Policy committee met last week, and we had a nice, long discussion with Perry and Jody Speck from the high school about graduation requirements. And, um, just reconciling the yearly requirement to what may or may not be possible. And they are working on that. It was, um, it was quite enlightening and informative. I think we got a lot-
I had a question at the beginning of the school year about graduation requirements from someone. Where's Dr. Graham, he must have left? And I think it was, there's twenty, it's twenty-five credits a year?
Per year, right.
It, it's the disconnect between the twenty-five a year and then the total not, yeah.
Right.
So we're-
And that's what we're working on.
That's what we're working on, yeah.
Oh, okay, great.
That is exactly what we're working on.
That's right.
Uh, we also went into, uh, more detail about our chemical health policy, which we are, um, which we are building on our own, I think eventually. That, that's also one that seems to have a, I'm on the outside looking into these two for that particular, um, policy. But, um, hopefully that will come before you guys sooner rather than later. And, um, we did get an update from Michael on the LTA policy, um, and how that is, how the kinks are being worked, worked out in, in the schools.
Can I ask?
Yes.
So, um, on the graduation requirement policy, we actually asked Dr. Graham and Ms. Speck if, um, they could take it back and review, uh, the policy, uh, itself because of conflicts and where he has some-
And, um, where he has some leeway in approving or disapproving various, um, courses.
Mm-hmm.
Really what's going to help him best overcome some of the obstacles that exist with the current policy. And, and the same thing with guidance, right? So, um, they have, um, certain obstacles they run into with regards to students who just aren't going to move forward in a particular direction. But, um, but where they're required to, where maybe it doesn't make sense. And so we're trying to get, uh, uh, some, some good advice from the two of them. So that when we put something together, it's really achieving their goals and a little more thoughtful, not our goals. Uh, we've done the same thing with chemical health, is that was pushed back to, uh, the school councils, um, to get feedback from the school councils. Um, and hopefully, um, administrators, et cetera, so that we can get feedback for the individual schools, um, and what they're facing. And then bring that back so it can be a little more thoughtful and, and cover like the scope of the district without creating more issues.
Did you get that?
I got that. I was there.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Um, space study.
Let's see, um.
I was there.
You were there too.
Yeah, you were there too. And Michael was there?
Okay, well, it's supposed to be Lynn, but if somebody wants to take it, let's take it so we can keep moving.
Can I just do it quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong. All right, so we were at the point where we needed to summarize all of the studies that were done. And so we created a spreadsheet on the mechanical, um, issues, programmatic issues, athletic issues, and student support issues. And, um, we are in the process of classifying the priority of the needs as, let me see if I can get the list down. As either critical, important, recommended, or desirable. And we have to find those criteria as we go through it. So, um, we started, um, I can't remember, last week, the temp, we had a meeting. Um, and just made it through critical. And so we have to go, we, we've gone through the whole list and identified what we consider to be critical needs. And then we'll continue the process at our next meeting, which is December something, seventh, eighth, I don't know. Um, so we'll have a completed list and then, um, they are, they want to, um, develop a statement of interest to send to, is this right, MSBA?
Want to consider that and bring that-
Consider that, all right.
Yeah.
To the school committee.
Yeah, school committee has to decide, but, but this is where we're at in terms of-
But you'll, you'll do a report out. I mean, they'll present. I mean, it's not going to be like, yeah.
Right.
Yes, okay. That's it?
Okay, thank you.
What, Mark, anything else?
Um, one slight in-process thing, the, the subcommittee to take a look at. Recommending a demographics, um, survey is going to be meeting this Friday and taking a look at the proposals and coming up with a recommendation to eventually come up to the school committee.
Okay. Nicole, CPAC.
CPAC's been busy. They had a center school open house, um, a few weeks ago, where the principal came and spoke. And also, what's, it's very exciting, I think, um, he made available, uh, many of the special education teachers and the therapists. And, um, they stayed at that meeting for forty-five minutes to, um, talk with, with the parents who, who were there. There will be, their next open house is going to be December third at Mary Rolison. And, uh, hopefully they will have the same, um, if not more, participation and success. Their next parent forum meeting will take place on December first at the Randall Library. An education advocacy attorney is speaking on five oh four plans. Um, in other exciting news, a parent from Florence Sawyer has offered to fund and organize a collection of books and other materials dealing with social schools. And those books will be available to teachers and parents at the Florence Sawyer Library. Um, they will talk more about that when they have their newsletter that comes out in January. Their next general business meeting will be February twenty-fourth. And we have been asked to help them with getting the word out. Um, wondering if they can get a more prominent, um, listing of the CPAC events on the homepage of the school websites. And, uh, who they would talk to about that, the individual principals or?
Um, well, have them send something to me and I'll talk to Cindy and Oliva about that. So we can figure out where it should go. We, we have the ability to push out from our page to all the schools, so.
All right, and they have two meetings, uh, coming up for parents of older children. And they, um, most of the parents who come to their meetings are, uh, for younger children. So they, um, want some ideas of how to reach those parents of older children while still obviously adhering to privacy, et cetera.
Sure.
So I'll have them talk to you about that, so.
Tracy.
All right, sorry. Oh, Tracy, yeah. All righty, and their next newsletter, oh, their newsletter show, I should check on it. They have newsletters.
They do newsletters.
They're doing a lot of, they're doing a lot of great work. I really, I, 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 I like what they're doing this year.
Off that?
Michael, finally. So I just want to touch on a few things that I don't think have been talked about. There's a memo in your packet around the honor roll for middle school. Uh, to be timely, uh, you should probably read that and then vote on it, uh, at your next meeting. Uh, essentially, it's the same, uh, metric as we talked about last year, uh, so that hasn't changed. Uh, there's some language change. Uh, we had a lot of participation from teachers, um, on, on the language. Uh, and then, um, probably the most significant, uh, because this is what we were tasked with going back, uh, is that we are really making it more of a person-to-person recognition. In other words, uh, the celebration is for the student. Uh, and so we're, uh, asking that the principals, uh, write a letter to the student, uh, announcing that you are on the honor roll. Uh, we're going to look at making it available specifically on their report card. That's a power school issue that is, uh, more complicated than people would realize. Um, but I, I, I think we can do that, maybe not for the first term, but definitely, uh, hopefully by the second term. Um, but the letter is really the significant aspect of recognition for the, um, for the students.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the habits of mind or the work habits, what was the, because I know there's a lot of discussion around that. So what is your opinion about it?
So I think the, the, the habits of mind are critical to learning. And, uh, we think that the, the value of them, uh, to encourage and motivate kids is to make them count. Um, so, uh, that's why the language is, is written the way it is. Uh, that, that gives kids really broad opportunities to be successful and still make the honor roll, uh, but, but recognizing that their habits aren't fully developed yet. Uh, because it's, uh, because of the rating that, that we're, you know, using to be qualifier, as a qualifier for being considered for the honor roll.
Nicole, I know you have a question.
The honor roll is an academic, um, achievements, academic honor. Are, if, if we redefine it as something else, then perhaps the habits of minds. I, I wouldn't have such an issue with the habits of mind being in there. For the few students who do really, really well academically, but have a very hard time keeping their mouth shut in class, um, you know, it's, some, it, it's somewhat, um, and penalizing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that what we're trying to look at is trying to develop the whole child.
Yes.
You know, so, um, I think in the conversations with folks, to, to really help everybody, uh, teachers including, in terms of, you know, making sure that these habits are developed, uh, that kids who, um, you know, are verbally, uh,
Active.
Active.
(laughing)
Um, don't dominate the class or dominate the instruction or dominate other students. Uh, and, and make them aware that it, they have to pay attention to that. Uh, if, if honor roll is important to them, uh, and, and to their parents and so forth. So it, it's about connecting the dots more than trying to be penalizing. Uh, and I, and I think that this is where it starts, because I think, you know, as the kids get up into the high school, they need to know that, um, you know, this is, this is one of the pieces of evidence that, that colleges will look for. And one of the ways you're going to make it is if you're developing good habits, uh, and, and you will be successful in high school and, and beyond. Um, so it's, it's about connecting the dots, I think.
I do see that. And, and creating a good citizen.
Right.
You know, because that's what we're, we're about. But I, at least at Hale, isn't that what student of the month is about?
That's one way that they recognize that, absolutely.
And so, you know, we have these two different, um, two different honors that the exact same children are eligible for.
Right, right.
Well, meaning that, that what are the kids who are trying very hard to get good grades, but again, are verbally active in class?
Mm-hmm.
Um, not everyone needs a, you know, uh, an award.
True.
I, I understand that, but what is, what is their motivation? Do we use the honor roll for motivation?
I, I would, I would like to think so. Uh, I think that it has a meaning for both, uh, for students. But I, I want to go back to a statement you made in terms of, I think one of the things that goes into the ranking for, um, this though, is the effort piece. I mean, that's, that's what these-
Yes.
That's where that is, uh, recognized. So if there is effort for kids who are, uh, trying to improve their, their habits of mind, then that should be recognized in this area. And they should be, at the very least, inconsistently meet, because they're trying. And, and they're not there yet. They're not fully developed, but they're trying. And that's, that should, you know, be recognized by the teacher when they score them.
It, it's very difficult in my experience to get an S. It, it has been, I've seen very few tests, for the reasons Michael just stated. And that's where the, uh, demarcation point is on the proposal, so, you know.
Inconsistent is a, you know, on, on this, on the continuum of learning, inconsistent is the broadest level.
So-
Yeah, makes sense.
If there was a student, let's say that had like ADHD or something like that, really great, um, academically, but, you know, semi-destructive or whatever at times, um, is that going to threaten that child from being able to, to be on the honor roll?
I can't imagine that type of child getting an S. I just can't imagine it. I mean, I would certainly, I just, I just can't imagine.
That would be my only concern. I totally agree with what, where you're going with that. But my only concern is that, you know, children that would fall under that, that auspice might be, you know, kind of left off.
Right.
If there's no safety net or something.
I think it would be hard, I, I would be hard-pressed, especially if that was, you know, part of their five oh four and so forth. Uh, and again, it's about evidence of trying to get you into that inconsistent component. Um, you know, I think, you know, truthfully, there's probably some language we need to do in terms of inconsistent and seldom, you know, to make it more clear. But we, we're only, this is our second year of using the rent card, so I, I think we probably have to have a couple more years with that.
Thank you.
But, you know, didn't we just change the report cards so that they were not subjective? They're just-
Correct.
They are what they are. And yet the habits are subjective.
Well, there, there should be evidence that the teachers are using to make their, make their scores. So in your, right.
We go policy.
But those are things that they're going to decide within their course, because they're unique to their course. So, uh, but those are things that, you know, if, if for whatever reason, a, a student received an S, you know, I would have that, if I were that parent, I would have that conversation with the teacher. What is he doing? What evidence? Show me what you've seen him do that suggests it's seldom and not inconsistent. And that conversation should be had.
I don't want to say always, that's always dangerous, but I think most, uh, teachers have a rubric that they pass out that indicates, you know, generally where, uh, certain activities fall within those scales for the, uh-
Okay, and then just because Hale was brought up and I didn't know this, if you already have a subjective reward for habits of mind,
Yeah.
why would you put that on the report card? Why wouldn't they just keep them separate?
Well, it's part of the district's standard-based report card. So we don't have a specific award though for habits of mind. I think, uh, Nicole was talking about our student of the month award before, which is a separate award.
Right.
And, and we do have, um, very active speakers who have won that award too. It's like, you know.
We're not voting on this tonight, correct?
No, I think you'd need to think about it. I think, you know, it's been our public packet. I think parents need to be aware.
I just, yeah, well, I, you know, I received two letters very, um, late today, and I would just like to give them the opportunity to, um, send it
Absolutely.
to the remainder of the committee before we-
Okay, moving along. Michael, you have your word.
Uh, well, I, the only other thing, uh, two, only other thing on the report itself, I'd just bring your attention to the, uh, changing times, attending the clocks paragraph. Uh, this is some work that Northboro, Southboro is doing around, uh, just having a conversation. They're not trying to, um, have a, a particular bent towards doing anything. Uh, but this is the conversation about essentially how adolescents, um, changing, uh, their behavior around sleep. Uh, and so, uh, there's some links there for people to, um, click, click on if they are interested in it. They are, they are having, uh, a couple of different events on different topics. And, uh, the superintendent there has, has made those available to, uh, all of us in ABC.
Are you in favor of that?
I, I am in favor of us looking at changing our times for our high school and, and our middle schools. I think it, it makes sense, uh, for, for lots of reasons. I know there are some complications, but I think it's, it's the right thing to do for kids. Um, anybody who has teenagers knows, uh, the challenge that they have in trying to get their clocks to measure up to school clocks. You know, and I, I don't like to think about it, but that first period class is, you know, always a challenge. So, and last, I, it's not on my report itself, but it's in your packet. Uh, I just want to bring your attention to the first quarter Asa Bit Valley Collaborative Report. Uh, this is put together by the executive director and we are required, uh, by statute to, uh, make you aware of that. They are, they're required to do the report and I'm required as a board member to make you aware that the report is available. Um, we really are doing some great things. We're very fortunate to be a part of the collaborative. Uh, and, uh, it's, it's really been a thriving, uh, part of our, um, programming, uh, for, for kids. But in addition to that, uh, they've really begun to, uh, expand their professional development opportunities for all teachers throughout our collaborative, uh, school districts and networks. Uh, so, uh, I took part in a, uh, course this summer. Uh, several of our administrators did, and we're actually, uh, replicating that, uh, work, uh, with, uh, some work with our administrative team. So it's, it's really a valuable part of our, our extended, extended learning for kids and adults. And that's my superintendent's report.
That's it?
That's it. Well, other things have been covered, so.
You got the STAT report, and do you want to say anything about that?
Uh, yes, that was just data that people had asked for. Uh, and I think, uh, you know, it's, it's always good to have it in, uh, to, for us to take a look at it. Uh, I, I would just caution people, you know, because these are, uh, these are a number of students. Um, don't, don't make assumptions that, you know, more is good or less is good. It, it simply, it is what it is. I mean-
So can you just like give people an overview that don't know what it is from perspective?
So STAT is student-teacher assistance teams. So, uh, we have a similar design in each of the schools. High school is slightly different. Uh, but it's, uh, the design of the model is to get multidisciplinary, that is educators from different aspects of, um, of, of the educational experience, uh, together in one room. And for teachers to bring, uh, essentially a student profile to them and to talk about strategies to improve behavior, improve academic performance, uh, address relationships among peers and so forth. And, um, so that's what this, these teams are set up for. And, uh, they have a process within each school about how to get on their schedule, uh, how they're going to be, uh, looked at. They have a, a schema for, uh, making sure that these can be done efficiently so they don't become just talk-fests for hours and hours and hours. Uh, so they have very strict protocols that they use to, uh, make sure that they're getting to the, uh, issues that are at hand. And then they, uh, they have follow-up procedures as well. So they develop a plan. Usually their action is to develop a plan, have somebody be a case manager, if you will, to partner with the teacher, make sure that things are being implemented as suggested. And then they bring it back and they check out and make sure that, that, um, what was suggested works. And if it's not working, to bring back the student, uh, for another case review. This is also part of, uh, a few years ago when they reauthorized, um, the IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. They, uh, made a requirement that all, uh, students, before they were brought for- for consideration for special needs identification, that classroom teachers, the regular classroom, general classroom, really looked at how they were, looked at their practices, and made sure that they were doing the things that I think we were already doing, so I'm proud of that. But in terms of differentiation and making sure that we were trying all the different techniques that really could help the student before they had to go to a point of having special education, which is a different aspect of curriculum and instruction. So this is, this is our model of RTI, this is tier one, and starts with tier one, and starts the process for tier one. In other words, in tier one is the general ed classroom.
Thank you. That'll help with perspective around it. Okay. All right, we're moving correspondence before, clearly, I'm going to jump in first and just, we received 50, Alita? 50 letters in support of Michael not resigning. And in order to make sure that everybody's name, or everybody would be recognized for writing in, I asked Alita to put together a spreadsheet with first, last name, town, and then Alita added a column for us for other identifying information. And clearly, that's a pretty impressive list. I'm sure there are more people who feel strongly about it who didn't send letters in, but I think it speaks to the relationships and the contributions that Michael has made. So I wanted to recognize that. I also received one letter from Bolton gentleman asking about the seatbelt law on the school buses. Michael, you've answered that. And then why weren't we able to email more than one person at a time through the site?
Right. We just have to create a group address, and we're doing that.
And the seatbelts on the bus?
We have seatbelts on the bus. We did that at the beginning of the D contract.
Yep. And you saw your email back to-
Right. So we do have them available. Our policy is that we do not require them to be used, and that's not, you know, that's not because we don't want them to be used. We do want them to be used, but the reality is that when you have 68 to 70 students on a bus, the driver cannot stop for kids who are unbuckled, and there's no technology right now that actually tells them when it's unbuckled. And so, you know, I don't think they are, but they're available. What we, our policy encourages is parents to have that conversation, and kids to have the, be doing what parents want them to do, which is a debacle, I'm assuming, since that's what they have to do in their own cars. So they are there, and they would continue to be there. I'm sure in our next contract, we will continue to do that.
So can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Because he CC'd me on that, and I think he was talking about a three-point system that they have that was on one of the CBS or NBC, or somebody did a news article on this.
Right.
And, you know, I don't think we have that, but this made me sort of think a little bit, and, you know, I know the kids just went to Boston, for instance, in the eighth grade.
Mm-hmm.
And is there something where, I mean, when the kids are out on the highway and they're traveling distances and something, that we can actually maybe do something like that, where, I know they're not going to be thrilled about it, but you hear every once in a while, someplace in the nation, some bus stops, and, I mean, if they're in seatbelts going down the highways like 495 or something-
Right.
-just might be a smarter-
So we certainly could do that in terms of, you know, requiring that as part of the act of the chaperones, you know, and so forth. So we certainly could look at doing that. The challenge, we certainly could. I mean, I don't think there's anything stopping us from-
And it's just a thought that I had on that, you know, to, I mean, none of us would let our kids get in the car when we go down 495.
Exactly, you can, right.
Any other pieces of correspondence? And why would I take any more comments on the others? Because I didn't ask a favor. Oh, why the letters weren't in the packet? Why the letters weren't in the packet? Why the letters weren't in the packet? The letters weren't in the packet because we actually don't always put things in the packet, and there were so many of them, and I spoke with district council about that, and frankly, what they said was, you don't need to post the letters, you don't need to post any correspondence, but you do need to keep a record of it, and you do need to save it, and we have done that because Alita has all of them, and I think I even sent you one that you might not have had. However, we, we, we are, want to make sure that people know we heard them, that we read every single letter that we received, and as a result, we put this list together. We have an agenda tonight, and the agenda is the agenda that's posted, but we did want to pay homage to people who did write in, and that's why this has been created. Anybody who wants any of the correspondence, all they have to do is contact Alita, and she can get you copies of that correspondence. It is available to anyone. It's public. Okay. I think the next thing is the consent agenda, and as long as there are no questions on the minutes-
Excuse me, Alita.
You are, what is happening?
I don't know. Do we have a legal opinion on the correspondence?
We do have a legal opinion on the correspondence.
And what is it?
It doesn't matter. This is for- I'm not going to, we're not going to do this.
So we know why it's, we have to do it, because we need to get an answer. The lack of transparency, the lack of process is strong, is strong.
Okay, so we're-
Any remaining questions, of course, on this stuff? All those weapons are being listed, letters are, one of those.
I'll tell you what. If you want to wait a little while, we will answer those questions, but a lot of the information that was in that form letter that went out, that was proliferated, is incorrect, and it is, I think it does a disservice to the community. I'm going to stop right here. Okay, so what we're going to do now is we're going to continue with our meeting, and then we're going to finish up our meeting. We have minutes from October 28th and November 12th in the consent agenda, and warrants from November 6th and November 20th, and we'll just assume that they are good to go. And what items do we want to consider for the next meeting? Oh, I do need to ask you folks if you would be so kind as to offer an opportunity to have a meeting next Monday at 8:00 PM, if I'm available.
I am available.
Are you available? Regular meeting, 8:00 PM next Monday. Michael, you want to come? You want to go? I don't know if you want to come. We've just got to get through a couple of quick things. I think we need to wrap up a couple of pieces, and we could probably talk about the honor roll then, too. Are there other things that you want us to make sure?
Not that I would be ready for, money more, not easy.
All right, so let's do that real quick. All right, so can we get a motion to add a meeting to the agenda to Monday?
I move we add a regular school committee meeting on November 23rd at 8:00 PM.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Eight PM.
Nicole?
Can you restate the motion, please?
The motion is to have to add a school committee meeting on November 23rd, 2015, at 8:00 PM.
Thank you.
All right, we got to do this again. All those in favor? We had a second? Thank you. I'll get you an agenda.
Who seconded, Alita?
Nicole. I'll get you an agenda. Okay, I think we're done. Thank you, Joel Bates, wherever you are, for turning over your auditorium and allowing us to come, and for everyone who did come, thank you for this, and I need a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the meeting of November 18th, 2015.
Oh, geez. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Unanimous.